Thanks, thanks for Tom's thanks in the talk. So Garrett, do you have opening ceremonies for us today?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, since this under the media. A tiny uh. To uh. God for this incredible country that we get to live in, the state and its community. Because of, you know, constitution, which I believe is established in the ground, gives us a place where we can show the rest of the world how to do it. And I found a quote from Patrick Henry that I might share is, "We're descended from a people who governs." Our glorious, the great parent, and pretty good foundation of everything. That country has become a great, mighty, splendid nation, not because our government is strong and intelligent, but because liberty is its direct foundation. I just want personally to thank you all for the few hundred years we've had in America. There's countless sacrifices of time, talents, and the ultimate sacrifice of life that many have given. Or which we consider as a fear. I express my gratitude to all of them. For helping us establish a place where we can raise our families without fear, where we can enjoy opportunities of pursuit of happiness, growth, education. And enjoy the gift of nature. I pray with uh. With uh. I stand and do the pleasurable allegiance of people.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Garrett. With that, I'll call the city council meeting of Nibley City, June twenty six, twenty twenty five to order, and if we would, Garrett, will you start us with a roll call on that end? Garrett.
Aaron Mann.
Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson and Kay will now be joining us tonight. Levi.
Uh, Levi Robert, City planning.
Justin Martin, Mayor.
On David, City H.
Sheriff of Nibley City, of course.
I'll just jump in, Steven Eisen, Public Works Director with staff is here as well, and Amy Johnson, City Director. Take it from there. Thanks all for being here. Uh, looking forward to three meetings in one, so. Sometimes that's how it works at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, we have three sets of minutes. One is the regular city council meeting, the other two were special meetings because we had a forum, because open public meetings act, we did a forum, we had. Uh, we had minutes recorded for that as well, so if you would, I'd ask you, council, to consider those three sets of minutes, and if you're so inclined, maybe tonight's agenda for approval. Maybe motion to approve, uh, motion to approve, and a second from. Aaron, thank you very much. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing that, we'll proceed to vote those in favor of those minutes approval and tonight's agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we've come to the, we have come to the public comment period. Um, is there anyone who would like to speak to the city council on any matter of city relevant, re- relevant? Trying new words out. Welcome you forward, uh, to, to, to open my. Okay, if, if the council doesn't object, um. I have been requested by Frank Smith, who you all received the letter from Frank Smith that Cheryl ordered to you, he asked me, and that was public record. I said, oh, someone requests the information, um, because it's part of correspondence with the council. Uh, and he asked if we could put that in the public record, uh, that letter that you see. And so without objection. If you need a new copy of the letter, that's fine too. Okay, without objection, we'll put that in the record then. Thank you, Cheryl. Gee, I feel like a real federal congressional, without objection. Put it in the record, okay? If they do it better than you, they do it more than me. Uh, anyone then? Chad, you're here, you want to speak to us tonight? Chad Wright, uh, Recreation Director, join the stage, remain here. With that, I will close the public comment period, and Levi, welcome you to give us a.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since, since the last city council meetings, there's nothing to report there.
Next, council, I ask you to consider resolution. Twenty five, twenty two, this is, uh. The point of the resolution would be to add Project Valor to the list of community partners. We have a redlined copy of. The previous resol- uh, resolution, and really all we're doing is changing the name and, uh. Um, adding them as a level two community partner. Uh, Michael Fortune, who, who you know, um, is stuck in traffic in Salt Lake, and so. Um, he asked if I would just share a couple of things, give you a little bit of a project update on what they're up to with Project Valor. Um, so since the, you all approved the change of use for the trailer park lot for a tiny home, the boxable. Uh, for them to use for transition housing for veterans. They have helped over twelve veterans, eight individuals with five families in transition out of active service. Now that includes, uh, two more temporary emergency homes besides the one in Nibley, that's not an emergency home, it's a transition home. Um, all are currently occupied, and they're developing a partnership with Utah State University Veteran Center. And will help them with veteran housing needs for twenty five, but twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. And they've expanded Project Valor into Salt Lake City in this endeavor to. End homelessness for our veterans. So they're doing things, and specifically, uh, Chad, you know these details as well, um. They're going to host in Nibley City, uh, a, a five K run and a Veterans Day thing. But not this close to Veterans Day, it's not Veterans Day, but a Veterans Day in very large part. Uh, where people that support veterans will be able to, um, let people know what kind of services are available. So, uh, that's part of the. I guess my sponsorship of their program and asking you to consider adding that to the community partnership list because. That would let them use our facilities like other community partners without paying. Without paying for which, so it's not, it's not going to cost the budget. So that's, uh. Just the lead in, let's send it to the council. We have a motion to approve Resolution twenty five, twenty two, wait a second. Okay, we have a motion. The second from Aaron, that motion is to approve twenty five, twenty two as presented and wait a second reading discussion. Seeing that, sir, will you call a vote for us, please? Call a roll.
Councilmember man.
Favor.
In favor. Councilmember for ours.
Okay.
It's my hours.
In favor.
Thank you, council. Uh, I, I, I sincerely appreciate your support of it. Motion passes four in favor of most. Next, we have Resolution twenty five, twenty, this would be, as we have in the past, uh, regulate fireworks. Within Nibley City, I'll let Justin give you details.
Free dot co, it's allowed to regulate these fireworks throughout the municipality, and we are required to notify the county. Matt, that they posted on their website where fireworks are restricted, so just to keep in with what we've done in the past. This resolution provides the use of fireworks east of highway one sixty five in Nibley City. And I was hoping, uh, that we could make this kind of just stick and not have to do this every year, but the law says we have to do it every year, so here we are.
Thank you, Justin.
Eric. Quick motion to approve Resolution twenty five, twenty.
Okay, there's a motion and a wait a second.
There's this, yeah, I'm ready.
There's the motion and a second from the arm. To approve twenty five, twenty, regulate fireworks for the city and wait a second. Discussion. But I guess. Many many east. Sixty five there. Sir. Smarts. Anyways, it's her.
I think this started about. Four or five years ago. And when we first did it, there was a few people that were upset about it, but I haven't heard a word about it since. Now. In years past, we have also not done very much education on that, so last year we did put out some signs, which we are planning to do immediately after this meeting as well, so. Try to educate people.
So I hear from people east of one sixty five, some of our my neighbors, um.
I think like most things, people fall into, okay, it's the, it's the role, we'll obey it, and then there are others that just do it anyway. And we don't, we don't write citations for this. We have not enforced this, it's more a matter of. Let me know if I'm getting into trouble, but it's more a matter of, well, if you start a wildfire. You not only have started wildfires, but you did it. Um, and outside of prohibition. Fireworks. So it's a. I think, I think that's a little bit. Punitive to people that want to follow the rules. Have my neighbors say, hey, we'd sure like to do some fireworks. We have to go somewhere else to do it, and then I have other neighbors that, that still. And I don't like to be the HOA president of the fourth of July, and I just sit in my house, listen to Becky tell me how much it's like fireworks, it's saying goats.
Is there a place that if they, those that wanted to, to put fireworks? Obviously, we can't have one's property, like, or certain, and just say, hey, if you wanted to, you can go buy them off over. There.
We currently don't, we really think. But I think it'd be a costly, that's a needed, tell everybody. Same location, we probably have to be a park.
Yeah.
Some sprinklers.
Yeah, try the sprinklers on.
Yeah.
Can't, can't use. For fireworks.
Right. Right. Desert. If something comes to mind, anything. Maybe the same people that sponsor Trump or Treat would, would sponsor light, light, light.
Look into it, right after Chad, look into it.
Everyone on three.
That sounds like a liability. That would be cool though.
Okay, any more to, did we, so we already voted on this? No, we have the reason, do we have the motion, is there any more discussion? And a second, okay, Cheryl, we call a roll, please.
Councilmember man. In favor. That's another option.
Yes. Favor. For in favor, none opposed, thank you for that discussion, thank you for your votes. Okay, let's move into a public hearing, this is, uh, the public hearing, amending. Budget for last year, proposing the budget for this year. And, uh, this will be, and I am following the public hearing. Or we have to adopt this by the end of the fiscal year in thirty. So. Justin, um. Can I poll the audience for a minute? So Justin, are you here for the public hearing on the budget, sir? Okay. Because Justin has given us several, um, presentations, and the last time. Justin did a great job, went into lots of detail. And so we're not sure how much information people that are here for the public hearing. Want to have a repeat from the last time, or if Justin can give us a Reader's Digest version.
It's okay with you, I actually added about six or seven slides maybe, and I just want to hit on those slides and then answer any questions.
So we'll work incrementally from the, your last presentation, so.
Okay. Okay, council.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I mostly wanted to address some questions that came up at the end. All right, thank you. Mostly wanted to just really kind of address or discuss questions that came up at the end of the presentation last time, so I hope I got them all, I think I got them all, but if there's something that, uh, you asked me or would like to talk about. Happy to answer any number, any line, any word in, in that budget. Again, I want that Amy. Amy is an amazing employee and has done an amazing job on this budget, she's put a ton of time and a ton of effort into this, this document, so please, uh, show your appreciation to her and all she's done. You wouldn't have such nice board money documented for sure without Amy's efforts, so thank you, Amy. Going to just jump ahead through here, if you saw these slides, seemed like there was some discussed.
Keep going. Oh.
Okay, so it seemed like this caused a little bit of confusion, and I wanted to make sure, so we talked about this. One of the major expenses in our budget is salaries and wages. Now, I said we, 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 we as executive committee and myself came up with this, what we thought was a great idea, and splitting how we. Went the scheduling that we issued raises for employees, and this was done for budgeting purposes, to try to cut out that extra fluff and try to be more exact and more specific. And so we thought it was a great idea, and it solved that problem, but it does. Awesome weird things to talk about here. Larry, if we could come back to the discussion we had earlier about the next item on the agenda is this issue of us required to have a public hearing. And in ordinance, adopting the proposed salaries for. Elected officials, statutory officers, and department head, division, so, so that's why I'm trying to get this all, this will kind of fall right into that next agenda, but we talked about. How in this budget, we are presenting a three percent cost of living adjustment for COLA to happen in July. So on top of that, a three percent possible merit in January, so when you say those two numbers together, that looks like a six percent increase to the salaries of employees. But in reality, when you stretch that out, calculate it, it's really only about a four point four percent increase over the entire year. Or other words, the impact of the budget is not a full six percent. It's three percent for the entire year, and then there's a possible merit for the second half of the year that is up to three percent, does that make sense? So it gets a little wonky when we're trying to look at this, trying to compare what other people have done, and I was not shy about the fact that as I looked over this chart, I tried to be a little bit better than everybody else. And what they were doing, but as I polled. The other cities in Cache Valley and Cache County, many of them are going with this three percent COLA, three percent possible merit, even though they didn't report to, actually, it's the next slide here, sorry. They didn't report on this survey that went out. It, as much as I would like to, this is a lot of the rest of the state of Utah, and three and three does appear to be a little bit high, if you look at the rest. Of the state of Utah, but it's right in line with what's going on in the rest of Cache County. So I wanted to make that clear. We're going to talk about that again, but again, the next, the next ordinance.
Chad, could you give us an example of COLAs? I mean, let's put the merits.
Yeah, so.
What's your benchmarkers?
Yeah, great, so, so let me talk about this one for just a second, Matt, dude, if you remember this graph from a long time ago, we, we hired. Mr. Swallow, who was the HR consultant to the state of Utah, coming into what we call in terms of the work of the study, we did a bunch of effort, we polled staff, we surveyed whole data from. Most biggest values in the state of Utah, in Southern Idaho, we collated all those, and we came up with ranges for every position. In the city, and now those are those blue lines that you see on the top and the bottom, so the range for. You know, a position, so the other thing we did is we calculated job values for each position at community city, that's based on job knowledge, responsibility, difficulty of work hand. Uh, there's one more, that's not coming.
Environment, uh, work environment. I think so.
And so we scored this, and we scored those not only, uh, kind of in relation to other jobs. Speaker, value of that job, and the organization, so we would come across and. Had value would have been up, and you would be able to see the range of minimum and maximum salary range for that position with a job value of X. And so when we started, this is what we looked like, and the yellow dots are actually salaries, and you can see that many of them are slightly below the midpoint. Like, most of them are below the midpoint, this is an outlier, this is an employee that does not work full time, so it's kind of just an outlier. But that's, this is where we broke when we started, this is where we are now, with the, with the adjustments that you made at the time of the worth in work. We were able to get people to the, us, the, what was set in the worth of work, and then with the three percent COLA and the three percent passive merit. This is where people would be, you can see that most now are above the midpoint line. And is really what we're going for, his, Mr. Swallow's methodology is to try to get good employees that you want to stick around. Get good employees that you want to stick around, above the midpoint in one to five years of employment at the city, and so many of employees are pretty. Long past the five years, some of them are under, some of them are close, but. When we threw all that together, this is where. People line out, is this making sense? Everybody's following what this graph's doing? So that's, so that's, that's why if we. Adopt what's proposed, then this is where people will be in their ranges, in their respective range, so, so. Mayor asked a question about what does that mean for sustainability, and how are we gonna do this every single year, these, these, these big percentage increases, so. What, if you remember this chart, this was in that worth of work. And I couldn't get so long, I couldn't get, this is the same thing, but all I did is I took the salary here, and I created. Just program it so that if you had to restring it. You got a four percent bump in your salary, because what his recommendation was three to five, so there's a little bit of fluff, this isn't an exact science, so. It was modeled at four percent until you got to your midpoint, then once it turns yellow, you're really. Receiving smaller incremental raises typically, in his opinion, one percent. Until you get to the maximum range at which you're just topped out, these guys wouldn't. So this is twenty twenty-five, and by, you can see that most of our employees, again, a lot of them have been here for five years, some of them. And, and it's also per position, right, so if you move into a new position, that doesn't necessarily get to go. Way up into that, that job range, so, there's a lot of areas that go into this, but when you model it all out and try to give it. This is the results going forward in the future for the next twenty-five years, you can see that the percent growth in salaries. Hovers around, should see it drop. Dramatically from what it is today, but like having up that way, this is no COLA, this is just. Merit pay, people increasing in that range, so COLA, any COLA would be on top of this, but you can see in those first few years. Stay here and perform their job to satisfactory level that we wanted to keep them, and move them along through their pay range, you can see that. In the next five years, we would, we would drop substantially on the increase in salaries, and this is the actual amount of hours, so we would go from about one point eight. Million currently to about two million in balance. So you kinda see this little bit steeper curve here, it flattens out, moves forward, it's. To. Hopefully, a sustainable, now. Again, this is model, there's a lot of assumptions, there's things that go into that, is that model going to keep employees happy? All that, all that's yet to be seen. Future will tell us if we can really stick to this or whether we can't, but as far as I. I feel this is much more understandable, much more sustainable than.
So the one on the left is assuming that all the employees that are currently high will stay. But what doesn't happen. We're, we're saying twenty percent of course. Quit the entire week.
Right.
Then.
It's kind of a question, are you gonna hire people to lower the rate, or are you gonna hire people to higher wage, if you hire people that. You know, are similar, feel a little similar experience, you would think you'd probably be about in the same range, or you could take a chance, you could try something brand new. And that would be a lot less, you'd hire them a lot lower range, and they might increase if they're, if they're ready to work. So you might actually see that percentage. Position wise, could fluctuate quite a bit, overall, I think it's hard, I. I don't believe we're in a situation that I can foresee where twenty-five percent of us would leave. So it, it really just depends, it depends on. Who leaves, it depends on who you can get to fill that spot, and where that person would be hired in the range. Is that how?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no answer.
I can't remember, and I'm not looking for it on my computer. Um, what's the flat spot, the Y axis value on the flat spot, once we get done playing catch up and before we get.
One percent, this is one percent up.
So that's, that's only the merit part. Right, so to me, and I raised the issue, I said, gee, is six percent per year really sustainable? We're not gonna be six percent per year, according to this prediction.
Yeah, if we can stick to it.
And then to follow on, so thank you, to follow on Aaron's question, if we hire. If somebody leaves and we hire at the. Low end of the range for that position. Would that, would that decrease in compensation show up in the graph on the left if we keep looking at this kinda graph?
It would certainly show up in the graph on the right, or, because you would be paying less in salaries and wages, so you would see, then possibly that line wouldn't be so steep. You see this part of the graph could potentially not be so steep, this, again.
I kinda feel like we could include that in the calculation, right, if it's a one for one. Um, employee leaves. Uh, and we hire. At a lower level, I'm not saying we want to do that, and you know, we look at individuals, we don't look at how we get the best. Slave labor, um. But that would be a decrease in compensation, but then they would be. You know, that would drive that, that change in. Percent salaries. Aggregated down for that year, and as they catch up, that, uh, that would drive it back up high.
Yeah, so you could see if you, if you hired someone at the bottom of the range, and they were an amazing employee, you could see this, the, the percent growth in salaries might go up. For that position, because we wanna keep that person, so that person might get a five, a five, three. Four, five, so that's more than what is forecasted in the model here, right, because with employees we have now. Once they get to the midpoint, they're gonna start tanking on, yeah, there's the percent increase.
So in other words, to me, the right graph. Or the left graph is the derivative of the right graph expressed as a percent. Right, so. When the right graph flattens out, the uh, left graph goes to zero, and when it's a steep slope. The left graph is big, so I think there's, I think if we're gonna be able to show. That change of employment on the right graph, we can also show it on the left graph, I think it's the same data, once. You could say one's the end below the other, or you could say one's the derivative of the other.
Yeah, they're definitely. Related, and again, it just comes back to this mall.
Yeah, and I doubt the. I doubt that, uh. If you go back one. Where it tails off at the end, I don't think we will have that, I think that's. Assuming that. All of the old timers. Like, never remember to ever leave.
Yeah.
And they reached the top and they're done. In terms of. Increase for mayor. So.
Okay, thank you.
I may, I may just say my notes here, make sure there's anything else I wanna say about that. I don't think so, talk maybe just a little bit more about it on the next, so. So that was the salary discussion. This is a new slide. The municipal building authority is a separate legal entity, and is one of the meetings that are referenced. Needs to happen tonight, we will have a, once we adjourn this city council meeting, we will open a municipal building authority meeting, as well as a community reinvestment agency, so there's kind of these two. Two slides are two different meetings that we need to have, and the meeting, basically, because we are required to adopt a budget, so. If we include these in our Nibbly City budget, even though they're technically legally a separate entity, and is why we have to have those other. But they're, they're, it's pretty simple, there's really not a lot of money, uh, the municipal building authority is legally, legally owns this building, and so we paid money to get to lease or rent. This building, and I, and I wish I understood all those reasons why they did that, why they built this building, but. I, so if you recall, a few years ago, now. A year or so, we moved money from capital projects into the municipal building authority budget. So that we could pay this building off if we want to, right now, we are making, well, we worked last year, we were making more money. On interest by leaving the money in our savings account that we would have been paying the building off, it was the interest we were paying on this bill, so we came up with a policy, and said if that. Switched for three months in a row, that we would pull the trigger and we would pay off this building, that has not happened, we've come close, but not, we're not really thinking it's.
We're still.
Yeah, so we're pretty, I mean, it's, we're making just a little bit of money that we're paying interest like that in the bank account, instead of paying off this bill, so. So we're still watching that, and if that flops, and if that switches, we will be coming to you, we will invite you, make sure you guys still wanna do that, and agree to that policy, and pull triggers that pay off this building, so that's all that's really happening in this. Building authority budget, now we do, because we, we budget enough money to pay the building off. But, but not interest for every single year, so we do have a little bit of money from the general fund into this. Building authority to cover the interest, so it kind of, kind of bounces and flexes a little bit there on how much money we're moving. We can't, this, but that's, that's it for the municipal building. The community reinvestment agency was an entity, an agency that was created to promote economic development in Blue Ridge, I mean, the city kind of industrial western side, or budget nine ninety-one. There were some grand visions there for what would happen with some developments, and the basis of the community reinvestment agency is that you, is, uh, what's called tax increment financing, and they would take the difference in the taxes that were. Levied to those properties and paid to the city. Take the difference between what it was before the development and what's after the development, and instead of going to the regular distribution pot for that money, it goes into this. Agency, this entity, and then this entity has the ability to use that money to. Reimburse or incentivize the American economic development in that area. So since we did this. No developments, so there has been some appreciation of the farmland due to just property values going up, but it's not really enough money. To do much with, mayor and I had a lot of discussions this last year because it was scheduled to. It was, it was created in twenty twenty, I believe, and it's created, you set twenty twenty here as the base year for those tax rates and for property values. But in that plan and budget that was presented and approved by Nibbly City, by Cache County, and by the Cache County School District, it had to trigger by this year, March twenty twenty-five. So because there wasn't a development, mayor and I reached out, we had the conversation with the county, our brag, economic development, wherever we development. It's titled.
Rag, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Sean Mill, sat in discussions with him, reached out to the consultant, helps to set it up, and their opinion, you really kind of let it ride, we'll let it trigger. There's no sense in killing it, because if you kill it, then you really have no options, let's just leave it alive, keep it, let it trigger, let it roll. And if money does come in, we have, we're set up and in place to be able to make some of those agreements, and some things to try to promote that. Now, that said, there are some state requirements, so we have to pay our consultant every year to, to fill out a report, and turn it into the county. Assessor, or the state, so there is, it does cost us some money to keep this thing live. Honestly, it's about five thousand dollars a year, that's what this does, this last year, I believe, we rolled ten thousand in to cover, this year, we're not, uh, rolling five thousand. Sorry, hold on a second. Should understand this better. We're, we're putting five thousand dollars into the municipal building authority to repay for those, those reporting, to do those things, so we have about a thousand, about five hundred left. Round it here, so the kind of round number, so there should be about six thousand dollars. Let's have the CDM sort of reporting, these things cost us for year and year, whether or not we go.
All right, you said we're putting five thousand in?
Yes, wait, I'm sorry, hold on a second.
Getting five.
Yeah, we. Yeah, we're moving ten, we're thinking it's gonna cost us five for the reporting, so there will be. Five and a half, I guess, so it'll be six thousand dollars at the end of this fiscal year, so hopefully next year, we won't have, we'll need to. Into the CRA. So we rolled some in. Believe two years ago. Spend that. So we have spent ten thousand dollars from the general, into the CRA, thinking about by now. Was five, getting this for the balance to be in our system.
And those. Those expenses, we need to remember to do this, those. Are intended to be covered by the tax increment funding. But. For us, administrative charges and for infrastructure developments in the area, they're all, all of that tax increment funding is. Uh, after the fact, it's all.
Post performance.
There we go, that's in post performance, so. You know, the. Things haven't gotten started, so right now, Nibbly City is. Financing by thousand five hundred for those administrative charges. But they would be reimbursable once the tax increment. Uh, financing. Actually generates.
Reversible, how you are. So tally or just move recent year?
Not a very question, I don't, it's, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's any.
As if we don't have any sort of commercial creating, generating revenue for ten years. A lot of money.
I would intend to go back and have the general fund of Nibbly City reimburse.
Yeah.
For whatever has approved of administrative charges out of the tax increment banks. There's nothing in the plan that says you have to true it up year after year after year. We just need to. Hold on to those papers. You know, and we will.
Oh, just a little bit. My question was asked about engineering, and whether there was enough money in the budget to handle any engineering needs to. Backfill, like Tom had, or issues that Tom came across, so, so this is all the places in the budget where there is money allocated for engineering. And typically, they're in, you know, this kind of these lower numbers, this one is high because we're rolling some money that didn't get spent on the stormwater master plant into this fiscal year, so that one's why that number looks so goofy, typically, that would be down around five to two thousand dollars. But all this money is set aside for Tom to be able to reach out to consultants, to help with the water model, sewer model, hey, we've got this traffic problem, and. You know, have this issue, and have that issue, and it will go to specialists in the field to be able to give us the comfort, and to give him the. Comfort to really recommend things to you guys, so. I, I kind of prepped Tom's a little bit to be prepared for this, if you have any specific questions with, with Tom, if you feel it's not, not enough. Happy to answer any of those questions. Okay, moving on then, another question was about economic development, there are two places that we could potentially pull money from. In the budget, aside from CRA, or economic development, in, uh, in the administration department in. Forty. There is actually a line that, uh, for four thousand dollars for economic development, now, we've had that there for a minute. And, I mean, to be perfectly honest, I'm not, like, if you got ideas on how to spend that money, I. I don't know, I'm open to ideas, I'm open to thoughts. If you have some. Discussion, or at least internal thoughts in my head about doing the general plan, you have Lewis Roberts, Bernie, and Phil. Fred, excuse me, Fred, Bill Hawke kind of is doing a lot of this analysis. About economic development in Nibbly, and based on the, how we wanna. Work, what's that meaning for economic? Give you some of this money to, to, to do maybe more detail or more study, but I don't really do that. Four thousand dollars specifically. This city, and it's been there for a year or two, just don't ever spend it, now, the other place that was mentioned, in, in the planning and building department. There is ten thousand dollars, and that's a chunk bigger. For, for what we paid as for grant writer, so if we feel like. Think we don't spend the ten thousand dollars every year for grant writing either, especially where we're so tied up in the grants that we got going right now, I mean, we could potentially use some of that for professional services to do economic development. So again, I mean, I think there's some money there, I think what is, is about. Help, direction, on what actually.
This could be like you asked last time, we have the right commercial budget committee consultant, there's fourteen thousand, and I help recommend some information there.
Yeah, so, so you mean if there was a commercial bill and it came in, we have guidance on, or?
Right, or, or some professional piece to help them eat through it.
Okay.
Box, or that one can research with some.
Okay. Yeah. I, I just.
Oh, sorry.
Please do it, um.
And Nathan, you know this. Too, so you can add to it or subtract it. The steering committee on the general plan. I'm pretty excited about the economic development. The steering committee on the general plan, I'm pretty excited about the economic development part of. What you'll see in the new general plan. So, um. I mean, we we, I think we should be. Trying to help people discover what a great place it would be to build a store in Nibley. And that's what this money should be spent for. I think we will be smarter about how to spend this money, maybe more. After you all see the same data that that steering committee on the general plan saw. And of course, that's coming. We're not hiding any secrets, but. I think that will help us. Uh have a dose of reality and also, you know, maybe help us figure out how we might help people plan it with.
I agree with it.
But we don't have that plan yet. So.
Yeah, we're working towards some, yeah. Okay, so there was also some questions about potential staff level increases for this uh per that wish list, really kind of. Two potential spots where staff might or has a question for some help. First one was industry departments. There are reasons for needing more employees, a lot of safety and efficiency, a lot of jobs that require free people to get done. So oftentimes they're. Pulling from other departments, from the water department, do something. Now, they do have a seasonal. That does help throughout the simplest. We've had, we've struggled getting seasonal employees that are. Reliable for the outside of some, you know, right. We have a lot of young, young kids that are in school. So soon as school starts. Those seasonal has become fewer apart between other some, but uh it's just becoming a struggle to try to. Make sure we're getting all those, all those jobs done. For for example, steel, we have, we talk about the crack seal and. So it's kind of a three man job. And so concrete specifically, you can try to do concrete. Getting the thing set, getting forms out, getting the concrete, getting finished in time. It's it's pretty difficult for them to do what they do with two people. So oftentimes they're having to pull from other. Departments. Now, that's not the end of the world. We had a lot of discussion about that, Steve and I. And and chat and feel like at this point in time that we we can continue to do that. Steve's obviously more than willing to jump out anytime. That he ever can't or jump in when he can. So we just kind of felt like at this time, the streets department really. Uh, you know, could survive for a little bit longer. And I think the driving force of the driving, I'd love to just pull that trigger and give them all the help that they need. But for me, it comes down to what's left in the budget right now. For the for the small amendments we made last meeting, there's only about seventy thousand dollars in savings. That we're putting in our capital projects. That's what we're telling the citizens in Nibley to set aside for the future projects. And we look at that giant wish list. Things like new public works, new city hall. Series, tough potential recreation center that's going in. And in my opinion. Is I just don't feel like there's enough luck in there right now to pull that trigger for either honestly, either the streets department or the recreation department. Now, I, and part of my hesitation in that is because I've already talked about how hard I've tried to be more accurate, try to come up out. You know, we may find in this fiscal year that we still got to cut. If you're set this point in time or at that point in time. But just at this point in time, unless we're willing to cut in other places, I'm not comfortable adding more employees. To the staff at this time, you know, the the salaries we're looking at for streets personally, you're probably looking by the time you pay salary and benefits are about. Ninety thousand for recreation, you're looking at seventy thousand by the time you get salary. And then, and I think that's only concerns, I'd probably be a little higher than that. But then you're looking at their, you know, PPE, that was. What vehicles they need, what equipment they need, tools they need. And so I, to me, it's just at this time, wasn't ready to pull that trigger. So I don't know if that answered your question well enough. I like that decision was made, but I'm not good answering.
When Justin, you come in from, um, when Justin says cut the fluff out of the budget. That's not the way Doge has been cutting the fluff out of the federal budget. Instead, cut the fluff is a purposeful budgeting approach. To not be so pessimistic about income. Sorry, yeah, but pessimistic about both income and expenses and therefore creating a. A savings account that we hadn't really planned on or that would show up in the budget. Instead, it's a. Effort to be more accurate about what are the actual incomes that we ex- expect and the actual expenses that we expect. So that we don't have, like I do at home. An underestimation of income and an overestimation of expenses. So I ended up with money at the end of the year that I had down down with. So that's the, that's what I think cut the fluff out of the budget.
That's that's a better way to say it, yes.
But those are a lot of words. We need a new term. Let's just say more accurate.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to be more accurate. Each year, we're getting a little better. Each year, we're finding places where. We can do these kinds of things. Yeah, just.
About trying to be more accurate and less pessimistic. Does that work?
Please.
Well, I wonder if we could speak to the recreation full-time salary person. Uh, so I'm thinking about. Uh, the programs that we run in recreation and some of those, not all of them cover themselves in money, but but a lot of them do bring in money. Uh, especially the summer recreation programs or stuff, all the spring things that we have to sign up for. So. Uh, I'm just wondering if in in terms of adding an additional person, would you add capability uh to run more youth programs? And uh what your thoughts are about, like, could that person just be paid for themselves by running additional youth programs that bring in money to help pay for that person?
Potentially, but currently, if you look at the budget and you go to the recreation page, you spend about five and a half, five, five point, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. On recreation, we bring in about eighty. Currently bringing in about eighty thousand dollars and that goes up and down just a little bit. We're spending another five hundred and fifty. On top of that to do what we're doing. So on top of that, we are paying about six hundred thousand dollars. Just to take care of our parks and make open space and maintenance. So you're looking at. Two divisions departments in the budget, which is more than the property tax that we create. So to me, it's it's a big number. I know we love it. I know we support it. And but it to say that. Another employee is going to pay for itself by running these programs, I just, I just don't really see that happen.
The parks in recreation, although they're grouped together in our administrative organization chart, they're really separated. I mean, they work, they work together. And recreation uses parks, but really they're separate, aligned to know if they make money, bring money. Well, I mean, I mean, recreation makes money part of me. But, I mean, I just wondered if it makes more sense to separate those two.
They, I I'm not sure what, they are separated. They're they're separated now. There's six hundred some thousand dollars to take care of the parks and open space. And there's five hundred thousand dollars to take care of recreation.
And if you just combine them, I told them.
Just to put them together, just so we understand what our parks and recreation are costing us.
Right, but you don't think that they're that another more added recreation would have a cost efficient person?
You have three, three full-time employees now. Not covering half those salaries. I believe their salaries are just hundred and. I can pull it up on on my computer. You can, you can look at it and find, I want to say on memory, it's hundred and eighty thousand. Eighteen dollars. And and again, we're bringing in about a hundred. Oh, is that it? Thank you. I can put it in the.
But that's three full time, ten.
Three full, speaking full time, sorry. Three full time, ten part time, spending two hundred and forty thousand dollars on salary right now. And we bring in roughly a hundred. So if we add another seventy thousand to that, I didn't need that person. Enough money to cover that some. Chad can correct me if he thinks differently, but I just don't, I just, I don't see that happening.
Does it currently create sixty, one sixty five, ten? That's that's as of today.
What's? Okay, so one sixty to two, two forty, so it's closer.
That might be the kind of exercise to go through in terms of a business plan. You know, to say, here's the cost of a new employee. What are the specific things that we would do extra that would bring in money to pay for that? So, yeah. Think that you have a great start on that, but maybe. You know, maybe that's something we could, Chad, you can help us do. To put in, to put the meat on both.
Right, so yeah, there's a hundred thousand dollar difference than what we brought in and what's selling there. So to show how how an extra person would cover, get closer to your cover right now.
Right. Or that, if there's overtime, if you have another one, if you go back to overtime, I'm upset. So I'm not sure if there's overtime. Some, I'm part, uh, part timers probably get some overtime, maybe full time, just accrues comp in the lead time. So, that's probably a change of dollar amount, but seasonals potentially. Chad, I'm not sure how much overtime. Any more questions there? Okay, so as Chad mentioned, budget is a little bit of a moving target. Uh, it's hard, we do a lot of projections, we do a lot of things to try to nail this down and do the best we can. We've been working on it for months. We're gathering more information. As we gather more information, there are some changes that we're hoping that you guys will be willing to make at this time. This is a list. That uh things that we weren't since even the last meeting. So on our grant for the. Bleachers for the children's theater, there were basically, they're laying their tariffs, but. Where we had a budget, it was about fifty dollars short. So instead of twenty five, I think it's up to twenty six thousand or something. We looked at those numbers. So there's an additional fifteen hundred we would need to cover those costs for the bleachers. And again, most of that. Is covered by the refs. So, but that fifteen hundred would come right out of pocket.
Um, yeah, so on the grant, it's just bringing in nine thousand. So that's from refs?
Yes.
Oh, it's still shortfall.
Even with, because the total cost is twenty five thousand. And so. The new cost after we do, we got, if the name, if the rest is, it's just up to be six, five. And so we are only getting nine. We we asked for now. What we asked, well, we didn't quite give. Okay, so they gave us half of that, but the new price came in twenty six.
Yeah, maybe. Just another component of the tree that's basically using tariffs.
Yes, yes.
Well, we asked for eighteen, we asked for eighteen and we got nine. They didn't, we didn't ask for all of it. They only gave us half of what we asked.
And then about uh additional fifteen hundred dollars to cover. So, out of our project is twenty six, five minus nine thousand, that's what's come. The other one was the safe streets for all that we applied for. We thought we had a good chance of getting last year. We might just put those numbers in. Why put those again? So these are numbers that uh we were asking for about two hundred eighty thousand dollars in revenue. And to offset a three hundred fifty thousand dollar expense. Now, we won't pull trigger on that three hundred fifty unless we get the two hundred eighty. Grant, but those numbers need to be updated in the budget. The capital projects, couple of issues with twelve west face three, four, they have their punch list that they have not completed. We're not getting a lot of room in common to get that done. So there's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars left on that contract. So this is not an increase. To the cost of that project. It's that money hasn't been spent on the project and need to roll it into this budget. We thought. And I hoped that they were going to get that done, wrapped up, we could pay that money and we'd be done with that. But they didn't. So we need to show that expense in. This year, this upcoming fiscal year. So that's what that two hundred fifty thousand dollars is for base three and four. Same story with there's. Had hoped that we would be farther along and spend more money on that project. They haven't actually built us, even though they've done a little bit of the work. And so that. Hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase does not represent an increase in price. It's just moving that much money from into the fiscal year that we had not intended. But it's not being spent this fiscal year. Does that make sense? Uh, there, one of the, in my efforts to be more accurate and less pessimistic, we. Eat benefits and there were, I don't know, a a number, a couple of employees that have came to us and got, decided to get onto our. Insurance where before they were on spouse's insurance, insurance for doing something else. And at this point of issue, we still pay them a little bit of. To to offset that a little bit, but there have been two that have decided they wanted on to that insurance. And so that's what these two costs and benefits are. Cover, cover those employees. Uh, just today, Tom had some issues come up and learned some things about the. West regional storm drain land and trying to get in from. Idaho, we call it the fields, which is the former Gibbs Horse Race Track property that is. Being discussed and talked about development and the process of building that, we could try to like to put some money from our capital projects and solving for Johnny Groundhog. Some original instances that were put together. Preliminary signs, we have further in. Existing land rings, we're in ways, we gotta move it a little bit. I believe all of this increase cost is to. Pay for more easily because we could have utilized the existing, we had quite as much we thought. So that's what that increase is there. The last one, if we, I've mentioned during the last meeting and I was hoping to have. I'm saying it wasn't, believe it, probably. But he was gonna talk about just the fact that cemetery district is constructing a new road. In the cemetery, they're contracting with Cache County to construct and install that. And the total, excuse me, the total price of that project. Is going to be around forty thousand dollars. So there were any assistance, any. Anything you got, woman, throw at us. But that is completely up to you guys. Pull the trigger off, pull the trigger on that and delay some amount to the cemetery. So, so trying to show where we're at with bottom lines and any counts is, I put all of these. Mostly is the capital projects, because that's the one that really kind of gets gets changed around. And this is where our bottom line would be. If you decide to make those amendments. Now, if you notice, like I said, one of the biggest projections, the biggest question mark in history, hardest numbers to hit. Size property taxes, this one right here, it's beginning balance. And this depends a lot on how much. Is going to get rolled over from last year in that hidden savings account that we've already talked about, we've already discussed. So if you look in your your P D F from last week, this number was, I believe. Seven point three. So I missed that by a little bit. We pulled this number today from the the financials. This number has not been thoroughly gone through with. Our account. So we just take the the financial report, run it on our computer. But at the end of every month, he does some magic on that, moves money, it's dangerous. But, but, so anyway, to the best part, this is about getting balance of capital projects is today. Would be at the end of this year. Like I said, these are estimates. We could be pulled, could be, we should be. After, if we get everything done, it's on a giant list. So capital projects, we have quite a, quite a list here. So we got two slides of projects. If we complete all these projects that we talked about, we should have about four million dollars. In capital projects when we do these. And we receive the revenue from the grants that we're expecting to us. That that is, that is a little bit different, as I've seen before. I will do a better job at figuring out, check that out next year. Some of my vehicles for next year, do a better job of that. So, with that said. Staff would recommend and hope that you would be willing to make a motion to make these changes to the budget that's been presented to you guys. And happy to answer any other questions, discuss any other items or options or things that we'd like to talk about in the budget. This will be your final opportunity. Like, like Mayor said. This will be your final opportunity. Like, like Mary said, we do have to have this proof for. And so we're, we're still. Hearing a presentation leading up to vote there.
Did you hear back from the cemetery or whether Millville's putting money?
I did, I'm sorry.
Cemetery. Either a special district or a special service district or a special cemetery district or cemetery district or something, one of those forty three different. Special districts that has their own existing authority.
How to be confused with fire district or recreation district.
Okay, uh thank you, Justin. Um if there are any more. Questions before we get to the public hearing, then let's get to the public hearing. Okay, I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak to the city council about. Uh any amendments. Ending this fiscal year and the budget proposed moving forward for next year. Please come in. Tell us what you think. Justin, you do a great job on the budget. I, I. I love the combination of. Engineering approach. That you have as an engineer and also the financial wherewithal to put all that together. And I know it's a huge team effort for. Especially department heads and treasurer and uh I. I feel really. Happy and thankful for all the effort that you guys put into this. Thanks. With that, uh saying no public comment, we'll close the public hearing. And ask the council to consider resolution twenty five eighteen. That would uh. Memorialize, put in uh put in place the the things that we've been talking. And you could, you know, you know how, you know, the drill, we could have a motion, we 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 have a motion from first reading. And advance it to second reading. So we're on second reading, we could make a motion. Uh to adopt and then maybe talk about amendments. I think that works better than to say, you can do it either way. You know, move to approve with these amendments. I kind of like starting from where we. Did the first reading and then it helps me to keep it all straight if we got amendments after we had a motion to adopt, we're saying.
If what, if you move them in?
Okay.
To approve orders twenty five, twenty two. The second reading.
Twenty five eighteen.
Twenty five eighteen.
Okay. And was that a second from you, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve resolution twenty five eighteen on the budget and the second.
Would your motion include the proposals?
No.
Thank you.
Uh I think. But we can still talk about amendments. That's the beauty of this process. Okay, it's uh your your motion to discuss also.
I know in our last one, we talked about our our favorite man of all. Well. Um I could put some money in their budget, so we don't have to wait another fiscal years to modify those. Know we had a wide range. Of anywhere from. Forty five hundred to thirty thousand, is what we're saying. Or intersection, if I understood right.
Five thousand per Mount Hill Island, there's eight.
For intersection.
Right, yeah, so eight times five, forty, roughly forty thousand is what we got to replace the ones that are currently.
So it's twenty thousand per intersection.
If there's four intersection, the other two intersections only have two each, only half.
Big conversions that we have. As one of the improvements or expenses.
In the capital projects?
Yes.
The the other, so we have to have a balanced budget that would be, we have less. Oh, it rollover, we're at one seventy, so it'd be more like one thirty. For future capital projects.
Well, I. I would, let me think about it. I think the appropriate there would be just say balance, balance the budget. So any change you make is going to require to be offset. I might need to coach you on where to offset it, but if you just say balance. Each bud, uh each fund, that would probably be sufficient. So you don't get into those details, but up to you.
Well, I'd be interested in knowing when it's cut, if we put that.
Happy to, it's 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 it'll. You you're already overspending what you expect in revenue. So you're appropriating in capital projects, you so you'd just be pulling more money out of your savings. So you would up the appropriations.
Do we have a second?
Second. So now we're discussing the event.
So I I think if you get to see how the other ones work, if they work well, or if you get a compromise or make it smaller, hate to re-engineer anything. But uh drive them through. They're getting marked up and it hasn't been used. Citizens that we represent. So I think if it's in there and makes sense, then we can, we can take them care of. Yeah. But this way, if you have a budget, if resolution. If not, we have to, my understanding, wait a fiscal year or open the budget in the.
Yeah, so so as I briefly thought about that, based on the direction you guys gave me for the software, the. Uh asset management and the code enforcement software. I just left it off thinking that if you wanted to do it and made the motion to do it, then we open the budget and put the money in. That, that's why I didn't add any, but I did go.
Yeah, I I personally believe that we should be more willing to open the budget in the middle of a fiscal year. Either halfway through or. A twelfth of the way through or whatever. I mean. This is the, this is one of the ramifications of being more accurate and less pessimistic. Right? Instead of saying, well. If we ever want to spend any money on this software or on modification physical or something, something, we'll just go ahead and put it in the. Put it in the budget. So it's there, but that implies that we've already made the decision to spend that money. And in fact, in this case. It means make a decision to spend money that. I'm personally interested in hearing how. Changes on phase five. Regarding multiple curves, if they make any difference at all. Do they help? Are they, are they still as objectionable? Um. To some, do they compromise pedestrian or bicycle safety? I think there's a whole. There's a whole very valid um. Consideration there. But I think being more accurate and less pessimistic means let's decide to spend that money, but we decide that we're going to actually do this.
So can I ask a clarifying question? So when we open the budget mid-year. And we decide and there's a proposal to make a change or take money, say, take, for example, forty thousand dollars out. To change the uh. Generation of these islands. Is that what we said was forty? Do you have to have it in a consensus of the council? Is it a vote? So in October. The resume should be up, but um January will have two new council. So. There could be that in January, if we voted at that time to take the money out. There's not a consensus. So that would be one reason to. Do it now rather than later. Again, there was a question.
That's fine. And. And then. I would probably ask, as we've done this in the past. Consistent with our purchasing policy and when we make big ticket decision items, even if something's in the budget. Um I would ask whether you would, as a council, want to approve that expense. When we have more information or whether the fact that it's in the budget is that's okay, that's that's an approval, go ahead and spend the money. And we have, we have been very specific about those big ticket items. When. When they have been budgeted to say, well, um we're going to come back and. Make that decision. To spend that money, or you say, no, spend the money, do it now. Either way.
What's the procedure? It's a typical procedure then.
To. Tell me and staff. What you want. To happen, to spend that money. No, this is the approval to spend the money, we'll do it. Or it's. We put it in the budget, so we know it's there. So we're not constrained financially to do it and we'll come back and talk about it over again.
So we just give that direction.
Is that Jive?
Yeah, so you got away from the stuff. So but it's whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, I would say put it in there and then when we have our. Public hearing and bring it up again, that way it's already there. See, we opened the budget then, we have it here. They're close to bugs at that time.
You, you expect to have a better turnout from that public hearing down the last one.
I know that he was. And I don't know anybody else, but we have a few hot topics and that's one that I'm gonna get a lot and. Once after, Tom was disappointed. Helped because of it, we did it for him. Some of them said they didn't see notifications, which we notified somewhere else. I I know I. But.
I'm just saying proper notifications without, you know that. So can you tell us whether proper notifications went out? Thank you.
I'm just relaying, but. I'm just one.
Okay, question. Nathan.
Uh so proposal that um is forced right now is to get a little more specific with. Capital. Support of mine.
Yes.
Capital projects.
And staff with these proposed amendments. Many of them. Feel similar. Can you help me understand the difference? Like, we have a budget in our capital projects.
Yeah, so if you go to your capital projects page, maybe that will help. I mean, every one of those is a line, is like, in a revenue line for an expense. In that, in those pages of the capital projects. Now, I take that back. I don't know why I would do this. Um David Zook started this and we could change it, but if you look at the very first one. Forty five, forty seven, thirty one is major street projects. And we put all our money for all of our major street projects into that. So for example, that two point six million after I've made these changes, we probably won't have that same number, but. That's two point one million for twelve west space five plus a hundred forty, so you know, plus a hundred forty thousand in street impact fees. That's also eighty thousand dollars to complete thirteen hundred west. Four hundred and twenty thousand is that one number for the thirteen hundred west and roll over for three, four. We have right now, we have, as we thought Heritage Drive, that's the potential, we have three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that upsize to make sure that road is built the way we want it for the management lines. So all that added up is to the two point six million. So, sorry. Roads, for some reason, we've always lumped them together, but most every other franchise has its own line, so we can, we can move back to that. If that helps, but the the thing that Amy's so good at is if you look at the words down at seven thirty one. Just say venue line, it should be describing those. Doesn't quite go, so.
That's right. I just, I know that staff references this budget and they're planning projects that they put into making this budget. And some are minor and some are not. It's essentially the same, so it's 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 not saying. Make a note, like you just referenced.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I, I could add to the major streets, probably what I do, or I would be just a moundable. Island replacement.
The example to you is if we had the twenty five thousand, should we move the house? This year, we're budgeted for.
It's just kind of there in case we.
Kind of there and that's, I guess that's. This is for the, we know we're going to modify it. Money there, we can do it consistently. Do we know? My opinion.
Yeah, we agree with you. We are doing something. Just don't know exactly what you.
So the the amount you're basing on is that we're getting modified into what?
Yeah, that that price was to remove what's there and to install uh flatter ones. Uh they're not smaller, they're, they are set back just a little bit. And not as tall, but they're, they're in size. The idea, the idea is to, the idea is to, you know, make them intentionally turn and be at a ninety degree angle to face the pedestrians in the bike lane. So the size probably isn't going to change. The location might be scooted back and the elevation bump won't quite be so high. That's what's in the plans for phase five. Orange is instead of five. Or instead of six. Currently, there's six.
Would staff? Want to know? From the council to make that decision before phase five is over? Or would you want to wait? More of a financial intervention. Deficiency in construction.
Yeah, on those, I think they're gonna have to mobilize a special large crew anyway to get it out. I don't know, but it'd be safer, you think. And it's not really super heavy equipment that pays to it. It's a jackhammer and some labor.
I mean, one alternative is. I'm fine with bringing the budget, but I think it's already in the budget. We know we're going to do it, but. Let's bring this up again, you know, do it. I'm just simply have to develop on budget approval, right? Does that make sense? So we have the courage to say. And we might have better flow.
I I don't think it's going to change the process, you know, it just, it just pick how you want to do it. It's not going to matter really matter.
Thank you.
More discussion on that, I'm wishing to admit. Seeing not all right clear on what chances to add a line. To the budget. Of forty thousand on a uh uh capital project. To modify the just being. Mountable curves on twelve west. And. Where are you going to get to forty thousand? You'll take it out of some other capital project or create more money from our savings account. Savings. Waiting for that. And. And so for me, is this. Does the council want to vote on this? To spend that money? Or is it to? Uh I mean, putting it in the budget means go do it. Is that directing staff to go do it? Or is that? Asking staff to bring back a specific plan before we spend the money?
I thought it was a specific plan. We could see how these other ones work. And then the. If they were good, we can rebuild these. And then the, if they were good, we can rebuild these moves and build. The plan see.
Okay. So it seems like that clarity needs to be in the motion.
Right, like with the substitute motion?
Yeah. So I could suggest, if I heard it right.
Let's hear it, you're better.
So I could make motions. I propose a substitute motion that reads as it already did, add forty thousand, a new line to the. Capital projects budget to modify. Amount of the curves on twelve west and to take the money out of. Capital project savings. To cover the expense. And the council would vote to authorize the expenditure of that forty thousand. When a specific plan is built. So that's my, I'll give you a substitute motion and norms. To get all that, Cheryl?
And, and we haven't triggered one, but the next uh meeting on that. Sometimes before then we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. So yeah, I'm gonna take care of this here. It's fucking here, it's clear.
Okay, so we have a substitute amendment. Forget about first amendment. And let's, if you're okay, let's vote on the substitute amendment. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Or in favor, not opposed? Now you have an amended motion on the budget in front of you.
I'll make a motion to adjust the, the cost of living from three percent to one and a half percent.
We have a second. Second from here.
Yeah, I, I, I know we represent the cities and uh, and most people don't get the cost of living. Um, to be honest, I, I didn't do it until I went to council, only do it. Um, if it's, if it's uh. And I appreciate they've already got uh wage increases with the one, three, or five of your pillars, right? So this is above and beyond um what it is, but what they have there. And, and then if we have like a target, if we said, well, the cost of living comes from here, that's the two and a half, I seen that came. I just, I just hope it's just not like a standard thing that we get every year. We get this one here, we hear cost of living place everywhere it is. Um, because most people, I believe, can do a bold, I mean, here actually it's the cost of living, which is probably not. Could be. You do.
We're for saving.
Yeah. And I guess I, I, I'm based on my own, on my wages and products, can do what they do, but there's value to it. So to do that there, every time I did a three percent there, my oil changes would be a hundred and fifty dollars um a year. So you wouldn't have people coming and coming back. And our, our biggest asset is, is our staff, that we want to make them feel good. That's why, my, 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 why we voted to do that, we looked at it in December, we did some adjustments there. Um, and I think something that we can look at, it's not that we expect, expect every year something discussed and. I don't mind any saving. That, that. I, I don't observe that. If it was my way, we wouldn't need money, but it just does a good job if, but unfortunately, it doesn't work. Yeah. That's, that's why I think if you did, did one and a half of them, that I. I just got the one and a half, cause and I apologize, I thought when we did analysis, that's what you brought forward, you said, we're gonna do a cost of the one and a half. Months ago, but maybe I missed her. Sorry.
Yeah, I, so. I have discussed this a little bit, and you're showing your budget a lot better than last year. It's a beast. Yeah, I know, this is a hard one, because I really appreciate my staff does. And we don't want them to get the wrong idea or. Or the wrong signal that we don't appreciate him and the beauty. Say them. Um, as we talked about, you know, asking you to trust me. It's the colon, on the merit, what important, which would you prefer, if you may, if it won? You try to have a colon, no merit, I'm gonna have. Parrot base and no, you know, and so I went back to the notes, because I'm the last months competing. That's kind of annoying on that one, but the one before that would be. Because the numbers are tight, we did, you did mention one of that, all of this year, less than current. And so. And I'm, I didn't have time with minutes to see that. Ask for a hundred, I'm pretty darn. Great, but I'm pretty sure that's what we discussed. And, and so. Yeah, I'm, I'm so proud of them. You know, that's my life, that, you know, I don't like to spend money, period. And, and this is different and it's, and it's hard for me. And where we just did that cost adjustment and everything, because like you showed, you know, we want everyone above this. All the other cities. I am, you have to be some kind of big. We're doing all these for the big cities that are a lot bigger than us. And when we did that cost living adjustment, you know, I'm spending last November, December, and maybe that's changing January. I personally feel like, you know, I was asking another three percent, if I'm representing the people. My people, others willing, feeling that's a little. Hey, that's why we're discussing with my vote was to save alone. So this is a hard topic. Shouldn't persuade you to address it, but. I feel like this year, because we made those changes mid-year, this last fiscal year. Yeah, I feel like a little house, but it increased because we did some of those were fairly big, well, a lot of them, not all were assumed. And, and then looking at that again, you know, next year to see where we're at. To see if we need to raise that, you know, two, three years, something. Two years ago, I gave seven. You know, high inflation, they're dead. And to try to understand this, I have reached out to a number of family members and friends and. And big corporations. How do you do this? Do you do this annually, quarterly? And it's all over the board, so we're totally bare. They do, they have a board order report, which they interview. You know, they've done a good job, but you know, two to five percent increase at that order, so at the end of the year, they've had one percent increase. But some of those companies also have office sharing base, or company just really good, and here, you know, publisher. Three percent, and it's not hurting my chrome. Uh, so you know, it's really big moments since they've been cut. That's bad. Um, they all do it a little differently.
This is the element. And it does seem pretty standard again, honestly. I think the goal was to be working from the gun. That was supposed to be, you know, something we did, and I realize you gotta have fourteen. I don't know, so, anyway, that's where I'm at, trying to understand all this around me, around me, next year long. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. You know what the. Consumer Price Index was from the Bureau of Labor's mistakes for the last twelve months.
It's two point four.
Two point eight.
It's two point. It's just.
Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to address the one point five. I'm not sure where that came, but from my recollection, it's always been about three percent. We started trying to figure that out, so I apologize that there was. Some sort of miscommunication there, because in my head, it's always three, based on when, when, I think when we first started looking at it, it was closer to two point five. And the, 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 the most accurate number right now is two point eight. Now, one other side caveat to that is how the state retirement system works. They have tier one, they have tier two, and there's different reasons, there are different things that happen within those tiers. If you're tier two, one of the things is, is that if the investments that are made with the contributions from your tier two retirement don't hit certain benchmarks. Those employees are required to cover the gap in that pension and the. The police and fire went to the state legislature and got the law changed so that. They, the municipalities could cover that for them as part of their retirement. For the last two years, there's been a push to try to make that available for all municipal, all municipal employees, and it's failed. They have not pushed that through for whatever reason, I'm not really sure. So even though it's two point eight, those tier two employees are actually uh. Gonna have to pay about, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, about one percent. Out of their paychecks to cover their pensions to go into the state retirement system. So those employees are getting closer to uh. A two percent cola, tier one employees. I don't know, we, we've talked about how we could try to balance that out and figure that out, but we just, last year made that decision. Now, now that changes from year to year, the year last, pre-year, they had to do that as well. This year they have to, maybe next year they hit their benchmarks and they don't have to. It's kind of a, it's kind of a weird situation with retirement plans. But since I've been in Italy for, for twelve years now, we've never not done any cola, and I think the idea there was to keep wages up with inflation. Uh, the first five, six, seven years was always two percent seemed to be a, a standard that was, was used. Then things got nuts. We went seven, we went uh. Four. Uh, and then this year would be, would be three. Now, I'm. Well, that, I guess that's all I've seen. So.
Okay, so if you didn't want to fight. You got a lot of effective.
Well, three quarters of our employees then would be looking at about a point five percent increase for cost of living adjustment to keep up with three percent inflation that's happened in the United States this last year. So our wages. Would be going down, holding all things level. Now, we did talk about potential merit, and if they deserve a merit, then we could bump it. And it would cover that, but they wouldn't be, their base salary would not be keeping up with inflation.
Yeah, I, I, I had this conversation as a supervisor with an employee. Private practice. Yeah. Let's just use the same numbers. I don't remember if they were the same numbers. As they, back then, as they are today. But uh, my job was to. Set salaries for the people I supervised. Um. The employee came into that meeting knowing, again, just using the same numbers as today, that. And, and I'm not gonna split hairs between two point eight and three, I'm just gonna say three. Knowing that uh, cost of living had gone up by three percent. During the last year and. I relayed to the employee that their pay increase was one point five percent over here. And they said, you're asking me to take the cover and pay relative to my purchasing balance? Said, yes. And I was glad that you've done. To a different company. That was the message that I wanted to give that employee. Now, merit is a whole nother thing. I mean. This employee had not earned a merit, a merit increase, and we're not talking about merit increases now, we're talking about cost of living. So. I mean, for, I guess, you know, the world scenario, for most of us is. Three raises in seventeen years, and two of those people in the last five. I go back purchasing, it's less today than it was five years ago. They still do the same job. But I think that's true for most. Just moving more of the living. I don't think I can make more money than someone else. You feel the same about city employees, they could not go somewhere else. Higher than most big cities.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give it the perspective, according to the state. So the state legislature usually will fund a total percentage increase for that year. Uh, and the reason why is that they know savings tend to be incredibly low. Or to the private market, that like, this year or something like that could go back on to where teaching. Generally, not, not all positions, but yes, it's also like, good benefits, usually companies fix jobs too. Uh, but what they do is they'll, they'll fund a percentage increase, legislature will. And they will usually split that. Um, designate or the institution itself will designate. What percentage is merit and what percentage is colored up? So for example, we might say a two point five percent increase for state employees, and one percent of that goes into what's. And those salary adjustments, the colas usually include some kind of performance requirement, so like. Has to be an eligible employee that was hired after a certain date, so. Good day. Um, and meeting performance expectations, so. So I was just kind of thinking like. I'm not proposing it for this tonight, but future is, is. If the council wanted to say, this is how much we're increasing salary accounts. And then designate what's cola and what can be, I think that was resolved the question, is it six percent, or is it actually maybe four? Presented today. We wouldn't know as a council exactly what we would. And then allow supervisors to designate. The.
Whether that's cola.
The merit. Yeah, we would say, here you go. And then supervisors get the parent, if you have a holiday. To really raise it and play with it. So that's just a, an example of. The other side of the public. Private. That's, I don't know if that helps. And so where, where do they get the extras, the two and a half to three percent, it just brings taxes, where? Legislature doesn't, because you make this one, I don't know where they do this. So the, the volume, the volume power is less, because if reading them the same. Paying them, we go to. So it's a little different.
It's complicated.
Yeah, well, and for reference, I think the state this year did one point five. Some of that is what's. So it wasn't very high. Especially the state. Even like, I don't, I have to check.
Would it be possible to do one point five, and they'll also do the three percent here starting July?
Right, right.
Right, January, it was two million four now. Just basically.
Yeah, you know. The timing is weird, right? Like, we, we thought it was a great idea because it gave two bumps to employees just for employee morale, like, ooh, I got a little, ooh, I got a little. That's why we did it. That's why we did it that way. Um, seemed like a great idea at the time, everybody in the. Executive team was happy with it, but then this kind of get, to get models this a little bit. It's fine.
The last thing you wanna do was, is to remind people of. There's some jobs that we've just kept out. We hope they want to increase and sometimes increase the company or some, and they have to increase. Elsewhere, but I'm saying it's here, um. I don't know, I, I guess many things that we're discussing inside, it could go either way, I just felt we. We had the motions. Especially with.
Just how, just how we're at. Why? You know, employees. Yeah, I, I think that it's important to separate. Keeping up with inflation from capping out. With performance. I, I saw it in my own career. In private practice, where we capped out of performance. My employer said. You can't get any better.
So did you record or less up here?
It didn't matter, yeah. The whole, the whole point of salaries to me. It didn't matter, yeah. The whole, the whole point of salaries to me. Is to not make it an issue, because I don't, I didn't want my employees that I sup, not my employees, I supervised the people. I didn't want them thinking about salary. I wanted them thinking about how to do their job. And how to do it well, and how to do it better and more efficiently. And so. Frankly, I. That was my goal, is to take salary out of the discussion. And I probably. Asked my boss for. Compensation. Well, well, first of all, I always wanted to keep up with inflation. I didn't want people to. I don't want them thinking about their salaries. I certainly don't want them thinking. I just took the cut and pay. Because inflation went up more than, so. Except for the ones that I didn't want to work. At the company I was working.
And to me, I think merit's more viable than cost of living, because if they're good, then you should give them more, I'd give more merit. I'd almost, I'll make you a substitute motion. I'll do the one and a half cost of living with the one and a half available for merit. So that give you your three percent. So those that want to work harder can work harder. They don't get the three percent just because they didn't get fired that year. They got more than they were working harder.
Clarify that?
So, so I, my first motion was one and a half cost of living, so I'll do one and a half cost of living. With another one and a half available for merit, so give you three percent. So it's the same as the budget, other than another one and a half merit based on.
But what was the merit you're getting? What was, in the original, what was the merit? Goes for January. That's getting turned a half, isn't it?
Well, that's.
Oh, and so four and a half percent for merit.
Yeah, so basically, what you're saying, I want one and a half guaranteed and one and a half.
Add it on his merit.
Which should be more than.
Really four and a half merit increase. Okay, you're taking one and a half out of three, three percent, calling and moving it to that awful merit change.
If you want more time, it'd be a good time to say.
Go on in a second.
So we have a substitute motion. Change COLA to one point five percent. And allow the January merit increases. If earned. To go to four and a half.
Will you keep this to the timeline? Maybe we switch the, if we do the merit possible. Four and a half for merit now and do a one and a half COLA in January. I mean, that, that's. I mean, that will cost the budget more money.
Yeah, the, the merit increases, if we stick with January increases. The maximum for the fiscal year, not the average for this. That's why. You know, I, I, I questioned last time, said. Well, it's more to six percent increase salaries here on here, it's not sustainable. And that's when. Justin explained to me, and I, I think he explained tonight that. That's not that average increase for the year, it's the match. Because the merit increase. Only affects. Half year. So people are on their current salary. Or you constantly to defeat. Originally proposed. Immediately, but the merit part of this. So really, that's where I think he said, Larry, it's not six percent year over year, it's more like. Four and a half percent year over.
That, that's half year. And so we're beginning with a two percent merit, and that's their new salary, so it does add to their salary. Two percent COLA. That's the roots, he said.
At the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, yeah.
The expense to the budget is, so it's not a bonus, it's.
Correct, it's the, the salary. Well, to be honest, I mean. Yes.
Did you move all merit?
Well, we've had a lot of discussion at the executive level if. On how to do those and we haven't really kind of nailed down exactly what we want to do. But in the end, yes, because it's got to fit in this budget. Though, yes.
When you talked to department supervisors. You asked for budget proposals, including salaries based upon. This proposal, correct?
Yeah, correct. That's, that's how this current budget is built and modeled.
Yeah, so this would significantly be. Impact with they.
Potentially, yes. And I, and I, to be honest, I, they're not all three and three, so. I mean, I guess in the end, you just need to give me a number. To hit.
And not verify the state. Moves are increases. And only gives us seven percent institutions. Usually to error. Usually to issue or whatever they want.
So basically, how, if, if this. Motion on the table right now is one and a half COLA and four and a half percent possible merit.
I'm not, I'm seeing that I'm not liking that. One direction, I guess I didn't understand. So merit January, so it was in January, you did good, this next coming year, you're good three percent.
Yeah, so to, so. July first, you would get the cost of living adjustment, whatever you decide, three, one and a half, whatever it is, right? And then we were gonna hold off, we were going to nail down our exact policy and kind of, we've talked about different ways of scoring it, we've talked about. Eight core concepts now that we're gonna be talking about to motivate and improve our employees and we talked about, should we roll that? Score them on those to. Equate that to a merit increase and kind of gone around and around in circles a little bit, we haven't nailed down exactly what we do, that's probably another reason we could. We, I, I took the foot off the gas a little bit because I was planning on doing it. In January. So, I mean.
But, but to achieve the merit. Between them and the supervisor, they know what they have to do or improve on and or.
Correct. Well, I mean. We don't know exactly how, but they have to show improvement. I mean, I've been preaching for, because to be honest, I'm, I'm a little honestly mind boggled that. You guys are bringing this up, because this is beans to what we have done every single year since I came to NIBLY. This is less. Uh, so I'm a little surprised, to be honest. Little taken back, maybe not quite ready to attack it like I should have been. But uh, you know, historically, if an employee was not topped out, they got a two percent COLA. And a possible five percent increase that was basically automatic. So if you weren't fired, every employee got a seven percent. Now COLA messed that up, things went through the roof. Since then, I've been telling our staff, look, this can't continue, this is not sustainable, we cannot do this, we need a new policy, we need. Way to do it, that's, we started with the worth of work and we're kind of in the middle of that process of trying to iron that out on. Exactly how does a person qualify and know that they qualify to receive that merit pay?
So what do you feel would be the best? Still go three, two and a half, maybe proposed.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with three because that's how I have everything built. We start messing around with it, I, I, it confuses me on how I'm gonna balance things. So, I mean, I, I would do whatever you want to do, but if you're asking me, I feel comfortable and confident that this sends a good message to our employees. That we value you, we appreciate you, we want you to be here, and we're willing to reward you for good efforts. So, if you're asking me, I say we stick to the plan. And. Move forward, but I will do exactly what you tell me to do.
All right, I wanna, I wanna chime in on this discussion. What's gonna happen is. It's two point eight, and I'm gonna give them one and a half. We're gonna turn our city upside down. Because we're gonna discuss that every other city that took place here, they got two and a half to three. We're paying them less. Than what our twelve year index is, or our twelve month, excuse me. Yeah, it's. There's a, there's a lot of activity that we do. I'm gonna tell you. Team you have here. Is well worth the three percent.
So isn't, so COLA is. They always expect it, and they're fair, and they're way percent.
No, we, I've been in twenty five years. There's been years, two thousand eight, there was no COLAs, you keep your job. So it just really goes off of what this is. That's employees, like I say, I don't know, three, four years, we went without any. Last few years have been crazy, but. You know, it's like we talk every day now, our parks are still going up, our water meters just went up fifteen percent this year. It's gone. This is math, fifty thousand dollars, that's fifteen hundred dollars a day for that year. Seventy two cents an hour. That helps. That helps our person in fifty year.
Yeah, I'll just honestly, I feel right there, I'm surprised because I feel like this is us. Coming back to some of the normal after a lot of very high increases. Do you think you kept a really good staff, and also I'll just improve something in the good staff? And I like that there's a plan. To get it under control, to use it based on merit. I did feel the same way, just waiting for a couple. But I don't think that we as a city. So I'm pretty inclined to follow what's been planned, with the department has a pretty kind of planned budget. Knowing that by January. Check out. I, I think I know where you're going, and I think we're on our track, but we have been increasing significantly. Trying to be sustainable.
Well, and I appreciate the discussion, hopefully, because you're, you're vouching for your team and your employees and looking at one. And that's what I was hoping is that we're just not, they're not expecting that, and there's a reason why we're gonna take care of it, so. I'll give you the third substitute motion. To uh. To just keep the three percent COLA that's presented.
Is. There's substitute motion to go back to the original motion? Then get back to the original motion, and we can still.
Well, I just, I really felt we should spend.
I think it's a great discussion. I, I, before we go, uh. I'll ask the council this. Is, is our tiny good? I mean, we've. Talked about the budget. For about two months now. And I'm not, I'm not being. Uh, saddened or majority or anything else about, you know. When we get down to brass tacks, when we start looking at the. I'm, I'm, I'm glad we do that, I'm very glad we do that. Are we, is there a way, Ju- Justin, you know, you built this budget, should I be, ask council the same question? Should I be pushing to get to this? Uh, down to brass tacks discussion earlier in the process? And if, I think if Justin would have heard this. Two meetings ago, a month and a half ago. It, it, it would definitely be, I would have a clearer picture of. The budget that the council is gonna vote off.
Yeah, I, I would have a clear picture or clear model, I would understand what the tax over how it's playing along there.
I'll make a suggestion that there is a meeting dedicated to the budget and very. Earlier in. That, that we focus on these discussions without.
Okay. And will the council commit to coming to that meeting and say, I might be one with brass tacks. Because it's, it. And that has to be part of the. That's, that's the question I'm asking, how do I help us get to? Get to the hard questions earlier. If the council wants to get to the hard questions earlier. Okay, so. The amended substitute, substitute motion is to go for a one and a half percent COLA, four and a half percent merit. And build that into the budget. That's the. Substitute amendment with. Any objection to voting?
Well, no, I'm not accepting that motion, I'm, I'm not accepting that motion, that's to go back to the original motion. I don't wanna go back to the original motion with substitute motion, I wanna vote down the substitution. We're gonna make a decision, we're gonna take a vote. Then it just keep me making substitute motions. I'm not accepting that motion, because it's back to where you apologize. Sarah, you're nodding your head like, that'll help with the minutes, right? And then I'll invite the council to make all kinds of amendments and substitutes and everything else, but if we're going. If we're going back to where we started, I wanna do that with a vote, not with a, just a motion, I said. That clear, is there, you see where I'm going wrong?
There's not a change in my mind substitution. So, uh, we're voting on the substitute motion, one and a half percent, go a four and a half percent. All right, uh, those in favor of that. Substitute amendment, please say aye. I see zero, those opposed, please say nay. So. We're back to auto start. With a vote, we got there, so. Thanks for the round holes. It's a bit disgusting.
Yeah, it's a great discussion.
Can I have a few specific line up questions? Paige, I think it's thirty nine. One of the page numbers, because the city council. And I can give you the account number of those years.
In fact, could we look at this on the overhead, we're all, you know.
Can you, do you have, I've shared with you on OneDrive?
I don't, I don't think I have the.
Yeah, go, I guess you could open the P D, I also. Should be, actually it's in.
Sorry, having some technical difficulty here getting that. You say, you say it's the last meeting?
I'll just, is, is it in this, this year, this?
It's in these.
This week. This week?
At least I'm looking at it as budget PDF.
Budget presentation. And then I, everything under nine is.
It's not number.
The resolution, oh, it's, doesn't have a number?
And it's in this, this meeting?
Very. Budget PDF? There we go.
Yeah.
Just wasn't scrolling. Oh, it's not up there. It's green, I need it. Why you do that? Why is that not?
Stop sharing, let me share.
Try that. Yes. Yeah, it's not working. Let's see here, sorry, I don't know why, what is on, oh, there. Maybe it's my, I closed the presentation. There we go. There you go.
Aaron, do you have a line number or page number?
Yeah, I think it's page thirty nine. Yeah, Justin, I know the 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 bugs always comes a lot, so printing one in papers. But maybe if you have printed paper ones like, you know, meetings, but we'll need to pass it. Um, okay, the one I'm looking at is education, travel and training. So I noticed that this year we've budgeted thirteen thousand dollars for that. The last two years, we spent sixty seven and then sixty five hundred dollars for travel training. I just, I'm trying to imagine how we would double our spending, because for travel training, I think. There are the two conferences that we typically attend. I just don't, I don't foresee all five council members attending in the fall. So I would like to make, I mean, so if I wanted to change that, do I need a motion? And if we took money out of a line, I.
The easy, you put it wherever you want, the easy one would be to move it into the capital project. Transfer capital projects.
I wanna make a motion to amend the final budget for this year from thirteen thousand to like ten thousand. And put it in the capital projects.
Any discussion? How do we do on this last budget?
Be budgeted.
And we have budgeted an extra thousand dollars this year, I don't foresee us doubling our spending.
This is in the accurate and less pessimistic.
That rolled off your tongue nicely, by the way, just.
Yeah, I mean, can can staff confirm that we usually budget this high so that everyone has a chance to go? Sure, and can you afford to go?
Yeah, that's how I was planning, bringing all, all council members. You know, same issue.
Flying commission mercy.
It did that too, I'm grateful that every time the wife was able to counsel in this, is the spouses, if they want to, and. They're racist, that she actually attends all the meetings. You know, you have two councils and two more, so I just.
That's covered.
She's not a lot of vehicle, I mean.
There's any in the fall, it's logistic. I've got only one person.
Okay, so let's, let's either discuss your vote, which one do you want? Uh, the motion is to change the final budget number from thirteen thousand to ten thousand. Or educate, or or item two thirty. Okay, those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's ten thousand. It looks like the league of cities and towns already did, but. Budgeting. Thirteen. Motivating us to budget thirteen.
Um, another question. On that occasion, this is further down, it's the streets department. Page forty eight, yeah. Uh, I just have, this is a clarifying question, I noticed crossing guard salaries have been down, and also crossing against. Why is it just going down? Are we, are we getting rid of crossing guard, or why is that?
Just more detailed budgeting. Actual salaries of individuals, some people were paid more than others that have been working for twelve years, so we just dialed it instead of being. Some more accuracy, but we're not firing anybody without. Yeah.
On the next page down, sanitation. Um, department expenditure, I just wondered why there's. So, you know, why why it goes from ten thousand down to three thousand budgeted?
We just never use it, we never, never use it. Same answer.
Answer my question. Uh, okay, this is leading into also the cemetery question, so a couple pages down on community development and recreation. Now, we, I noticed on the higher senior center. We have much lost your gathering this year, fifteen hundred, and the explanation on that says. Just increasing the donation to the center for this fiscal year. I don't know.
PDF is searchable, if you give us some.
So, yeah, the higher senior center goes up there. Um, just wondering, what? I've never seen any, and maybe I'm just not looking for enough, and like any advertising about what the benefits are from senior center to our seniors in N evenly. So I'm just wondering, maybe this is a discussion for a different time. Is the donation to the senior center sort of like library, or friend and neighbors, and that it's available to newly residents? I, I, do you do, do the residents use the senior center, or is this just giving money to higher city?
Uh, a few months ago, I was six months. Which, I learned your entire month of activities. Um, there was a change of. Who's looking at my senior center, and by what the judge.
Okay. Okay, let's go down. Dropping that up there, okay, oh, perfect.
So they're, it's gonna change in leadership at that R senior center, that director, but that. And they're very forward thinking, they have a library programs, uh they seem to be going in the right direction. Uh, that money, he hasn't provided anything in terms of number of newly residents, I'm sure if we asked him, he would provide them. So we can, we can report that later if you'd like.
Just move it back to the cemetery, the conversation. You could get, you guys suggested five thousand dollars as a donation to that. Um, or not donation, but helping pay for that road, is that?
Thinner.
Wait, can I, can I be clear? Is that your recommendation, or are you passing along their request?
There was zero, no official number requested, it was just, are you willing to help? And I said I would ask you all, and so in the spirit of trying to be. Uh, prepared for what the bottom line of your capital projects number would be, I picked a number. That was just absolutely out of nowhere, can be more or less whatever you want.
But are you making a recommendation or passing along the request?
I am making.
That we, you you're recommending that we pay five thousand dollars for the road?
Yeah, uh, because I just picked a number, I needed a number to put in the spreadsheet to make the balance, tell you what the end and balance would be. They did not ask for five thousand dollars, they just said, are you willing to financially help us, and I said, I would ask you guys.
So why would you recommend that we pay for that instead of cemetery district?
I just put a number there, to, so that I would remember to ask you what number you wanted to put it there of.
That's, that's, that's complete.
Um, I would like to hear the council's thoughts about that, but this is not a, a motion. And I just, I'm not sure that we need to pay that, but I wanna hear everybody else's thoughts as well.
Make a motion, mayor.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion that we not pay that, that we pay zero dollars to the request.
So you're making a motion that we.
Uh, I'm gonna let you discuss it, because I don't know how to take that much.
It's not in the budget now.
Okay. Well, that is not anywhere, it is not anywhere in my.
I've put a number in there for planning purposes to show you, so that I remember to talk about. No, you don't, that they marked the appropriate thing to do, I think.
Presentation? This one right there?
Yeah, so if you see on this proposed amendments. The last line was cemetery five thousand.
Oh, I think you. Where is this saying, where is this saying?
Now those other.
Where is it in?
Justin has the just and we need to deal with us. So I'll take care of the first one. Motion to include the bleacher adjustment expense. That's it, there's second, I have a motion and a second to, it's uh in- increase, the the motion was from Nathan, the technician. Because this is an amendment to the existing budget that's been presented to us.
So, this is.
Here, okay. We're gonna pick and choose if we want. We.
Uh, uh, we, are we clear?
Yes, thank you.
Just for my note take, can I? Just for my ease of note taking, understand, are we gonna do, take these one by one? Be sharp, Amy.
Motion and second from here, most remain the second here is to amend. The budget as we have seen it so far, for a bleacher adjustment expense of plus fifteen hundred dollar. Discussion. Seeing none of those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that, that's a yes. Yeah. Still have the budgets.
So we could say, I could say, I want to make the motion to have the rest of the, why to down them on accepting cemetery.
So there's a motion to amend the budget as we have seen so far, for the proposed amendments, number two to N minus one. Last minus one. Uh, to make the, uh, like the motion for mayor, uh, to make that amendment to the budget and a second from.
My discussion is why you. So I, um. Staff, us removing that five thousand, you now have to make another adjustment for five thousand, or no use in taking out capital.
Not, not, not the cemetery?
Yeah.
That's not in the budget, no, no, right, so you, you did this with a plan of make adjustments or enough? Because they're all capital.
Yeah, they're all capital, just balances, just balance the fund with appropriation, so. Whatever, these are, I think if you focus on the projects and then just balance the fund. By pulling out your savings, which is technically termed appropriating. It'd be good.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none of those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye. Any opposed? Perfect, thanks, so. Now we have a further amended motion. Okay, um, anyone opposed to voting? I'll take that as a follow up question motion. And we achieved the required number by me saying anyone opposed to voting. No one's voted, so let's vote, Cheryl, let's, let's do it. In favor?
In favor?
Favor.
In favor?
Or in favor and not opposed, so we have adopted the budget. Good discussion. Can we handle the? Compensation before we take a break? Okay, let's do a public hearing on ordinance twenty five twenty two, this, this was, this would be. Providing compensation of elected staff for two hundred percent of our heads. It's Justin, can you help us with that?
So this is the second reading and public hearing for this requirement of state law that says any statutory officer. Division manager, city manager. Can't remember the whole list, but. Any, the, that list needs to be presented to have a public hearing and an ordinance approved by the city council to. Approve any increase, so. This is where it's gonna get a little messy, uh, back to that same issue of the timing of when. The increases are implemented impacts the dollar amount that comes out of the budget. But the, the way the law reads is that you need to have a public hearing and an ordinance for any increase, so mayor and I had a. Good discussion about it and decided to talk and to make it. The impact to the budget, which, which would be the lower number, the four and a half percent ish. Uh, some of these are not exactly four and a half, some of them are, are those different ones that I talked about, so that's what I did with all these. Proposed red lines was I reduced that number to the actual impact of the budget. But I, as more I thought about it, I don't know if that's what we want to do, because. At, say, for example, if next year we just decide, you know, we're not. Going to do an ordinance to increase compensation. They're already being paid more, there's their current salary at that time will be more. Than what is shown on this, because this shows actual impact of budget, not what their current salary is. So my original intent was to take worst case scenario, put in the highest salary so that at the end of the year. They would roll over and you would already be covered with what that current salary would be, we tracking? So, my recommendation would be to play it as safe as possible. Understand that this chart is not showing you impacted the budget, but a specific number. That a person's salary would be. Maxed out for the current, for this upcoming fiscal year. And that is not a guarantee, that is, comes back to the merit. That's just saying you are authorizing me and to pay up to that, to make their salary up to that salary, which is computed as an annual salary. So my recommendation is to, to not, to just adopt what you adopted for first reading and not accept these red lines.
Hey, so we don't, we don't. We don't need a motion to not accept it.
Correct, you, you, I just.
So.
I, I should, I think if you go, you know, reject all changes, it would go back, or. If, if that's what, I guess I'm looking for direction of how you wanna handle this. Cause I don't wanna get in a situation where you guys say, I don't want you to pay any more money to your salaries. I'm already gonna be paying more.
That's the intro to public hearing. I think you're fine, uh since what we're looking at, the redlined. Proposal from staff. Since staff's. Proposal is to go back to where we were, I think it's acceptable. During the public hearing, before the public hearing, while we're waiting for public input to reject the changes that are redlined. If council doesn't mind me doing that. And with that, will the public hear? Uh seeing no public comment. On this matter, we will close the public hearing. So this is the three percent cost of living that we decided to do for people like city council. A long time ago, instead of.
Yep.
So leaving it alone. Um, I'm gonna ask for an amendment then, based on what you just said, Justin, and I'll. I can make motions, I'm gonna move to amend the column. Can you spell up this a little bit? Proposed. Sorry, did I miss? Oh, I haven't, sorry, I can't.
Yeah, I suppose, love and fearing. Sorry, thank you, Cheryl. Make a motion to. This twenty-five twenty-two, not first reading.
So you're motioning to first reading. Say, the article.
He said he without. Okay, I just watched you explain, so that's. What first reading, what does twenty?
So there's a motion. And second from Nathan, motion for, take, Nathan to. Uh dogs. What's wrong?
Twenty-five twenty-two.
Now I can make a motion to amend, I'm gonna do it. Insert the word maximum, proposed maximum fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six annual salary. There are second. Okay, second for more. So I mean, it's not the average. So what we're showing here, I, Justin, if I'm, if I'm, if I heard you correctly, you're saying this is the maximum. Annual salary for twenty-five, twenty-six. And so for a guy like me, I like to know if it's. Average would have worked too, if we had stayed with the numbers that we just didn't stay with.
Okay, very good. So. Let's, can we use mayor's example, so. The twelve, what is that, twelve, three, I can't remember.
Twelve, two, eighty.
That's. Well, okay, just gonna give you some.
That's not a good example, cause I don't give merit.
Yeah, so. These could receive a merit, that's the number with the merit, that's the highest that they could.
Merit and column.
Highest merit and both, the highest possible they get to if they.
I mean, I give you a, um. Yes, it's substitute, okay. To include that change, but also add the word maximum. Table, table.
Okay.
Just follow up.
Where?
Second compensation, so before the word.
So we have a substitute on the motion to amend to put maximum, all of us. Second from more. Thanks for that.
So nothing has changed between the first reading and separating on this table?
Except the motion then to amend this.
Hasn't much changed, it's worth.
And does this satisfy you, John Code?
I think it's a lot of understanding, yeah, it's more than.
Justin, you and I talked on the phone yesterday about. This, about this agenda item, but nothing's been changed since we spoke, correct?
Correct.
Do you remember the conversation we had on the motion?
It has, I apologize, I'm sorry. That would be a, a difference, you're correct.
What, what would be procedure for seeing a difference there?
Uh. So the amendment, it was under the recreation director's salary. It went from, I think. Sorry, give me just a second. No, so this is the, the exact same as the last reading, if you want to change that number. Then. You need to make a motion to change that number.
This is. Okay, I would like to make an amendment.
May.
To change the recreation director proposed maximum salary from eighty-five eight of four to ninety. Or, sorry. It'll be ninety-eight of four. Thank you.
So it's like. Okay, motion from era. Second from Nathan. To change the recreation. Proposed maximum, yeah, sorry. And there'd be a change in the. Right column as well.
Levo's working a lot.
Yes. At five hundred or five thousand.
I didn't see that it was the same, yeah.
I wondered where they made a fork in from, I think it was. So, can you go ahead, Joe? So, I'm doing that. Change the three percent, correct, that you passed, that's that.
Just give me the number you want. And I'll make the math work.
The number for recreation director or the number for the?
The recreation, yeah, I can make the, I add one and a half percent, uh. Both. Kind of built in, so.
Anti-accuracy.
Right.
Nathan, thank you.
Can I?
So, so we haven't beat all the accuracy, inaccuracy out of you yet?
No, there's still. Sounds.
Sounds. Eric, go ahead.
Um, just to explain why I did that a little bit, um. In the work of work study, this, that, study that I referred to, in the work, work study, there's a number variety of. Metrics that each employee is evaluated on. Um I think there was a couple of numbers in Chad's work, work study that he should, should be higher, one of those was a pu- public outreach number. And whilst, uh I think he does a lot of public outreach, I think it's important the work that. It's the public outreach he's doing and the messages that he's giving to our city, I think that number should have been higher, um. There's a couple of just top metrics there that I think maybe were. I think should have been higher for him, so that's why I wanted to increase that.
And maybe to go on with that with the smaller city, but times, all, all of you guys wear multiple hats, I appreciate that, so as. St. Rose, then they narrowed down. I appreciate Chad, that's all, all of good. Hope my three percent in public, feelings, thank you all you guys.
What, uh. Maybe, Eric, I'll, if you don't mind me asking a follow-up question to what you said, I appreciate that explanation. What? What process are we undoing? In determining the worth of work by going with this amendment?
But it would just change where he falls in the range, though he would be.
But how did we get to that ranking?
So you had the four factors, the job that we talked about, and it's just a score.
Who scored it?
So I scored it, Cheryl scored it, and Mike Swallow scored it. I believe we took my scores, which were. The highest, so.
The most generous.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so tha- that's another good point, you know, you're not necessarily scoring Chad. You're scoring the position.
Right. Yeah. And I'm not opposed to this at all, I'm just, you know, when we. When we make a decision, we're undoing some other process that begins. Which is fine, that's what we do, we make decisions. Okay, is there a discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, any opposed to voting on the amendment, seeing none, those in favor of the amendment. That's on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there's the amended motion for you, uh.
Uh mayor, unless I completely missed it.
Didn't we vote on maximum yet, I'm gonna have to take the regular, so yeah.
No.
I mean, we can have other streams.
So. I'm going to. Make a substitute motion that includes all of the blue up there. So that's the first great motion, okay. Whatever you see in blue.
All changes.
Is my substitute motion.
Second.
Second, from Nathan. Is that clear? We don't have to unwind. That's the whole beauty of substitute motion, you don't have to unwind all the amendments, all the amendments, all the amendments. So. That's the motion. To amend. Those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
There's already a post, okay. That's the main motion in front of you, as red light.
Blue light, blue light.
Calling balls and strikes, sure easier. It's a ball or it's a strike, you don't go back. Some people wanted to pay it. Alright, um, I'm sensing that we're ready to vote on this, any opposed? Devoting, seeing none. Cheryl, have we wrapped it all up correctly so far that we're ready to call the wall, thank you for. Keeping us, uh. On, on task.
Sounds like my underwater.
In favor. In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, uh, that brings us to item twelve, obviously I could use a short break. Anyone opposed to take, uh. Uh break until nine fifteen, then we will come back together. Seeing oppositions. I'll call the, uh, council back to order. And, uh, I much appreciate the discussion we've had on the agenda so far. And I also am going, I'm, I'm, I've never made a mo- I haven't made a motion in like, what, years now? And I'm, what's, what do you require? When's, when they start? I moved to suspend the agenda and move item fifteen. Discussing, uh, support for a septic tank. I'm not trying to influence how you will feel about that. But I figured if Mr. Tori is here for that, I guess. Yes, I should have done that earlier in the evening. But my motion is to spend the agenda, take up item fifteen next. Uh, second from, sir. Thank you. Uh, those in favor of spending the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Tom, take it away.
Thanks, guys. This will be good. So pretty water source protection zone. What is it, right? It's basically as long as established through a GI or hydrogeology study. Tells that designates an area where probability of groundwater or anything else could get into a water source. It could be a spring, it could be a well. In this case, um, well, in most cases, zone one is, is a is an area of a hundred feet from the wellhead. Zone two would be two hundred and fifty days of travel through the study. Three is three years and zone four is fifteen years. Mr. Tori came to us, it's been a while ago. He's proposing a new septic system with a with a subdivision to support one's new single family dwelling. It's located about fifteen seventy-five east highway one oh one. It's unincorporated county near Hiram. You can see in this picture, it's right along the highway, just just above Hollow Road. So in order to do a septic tank in in the source protection zone, or any, I'll back up. In order to do a septic system, he needs to apply for a permit with the Bay River Health Department. Some studies involved with seepage, his patient and things. And when he went to to the Bay River Health Department, they identified that it was within our source protection zone. Affecting two of our sources, gate springs, which used to be a drinking water source, it's now been inactivated or deactivated temporarily. And then the six forty well is our source that's it's possibly affecting. Now, Nibley City Code has has things in it that protect our water sources. So in order to do a septic system, it allows the city council to consider that septic system through another hydrogeology study. And in this case, we hired Bill Laughlin Water Associates. And he did a study. He basically researched all the, excuse me, he researched Nibley City well sources and water sources. Nothing else. It was just specific to to the city sources. And that's what our city code requires there to be considered. In it also in the code, it, uh, requires appropriate measures to safeguard the Nibley City city area water. So this is an exhibit of both the six forty well on the left and lower. The upper section is the eight springs. You can see those little blue arrows. They're kind of designated where any, uh, influence into that source is going. Now, on the left, you'll see the wellhead is zone one, it's about a hundred feet. Zone two is a red circle. Zone three is that big yellow one. Any questions so far? I'm sorry for, I'm sorry if I'm making. Sorry. That's that true. Through this study, the findings were from from Laughlin. The six forty well is a confined aquifer. And it's a sufficient distance away from this proposed septic tank that the potential of any seepage getting into that is very low. And then also in the Yates Springs, the seepage is is most likely to get into the the upper aquifer. But then discharged towards the river. And you can see here, this is on the lower right. You can see the ground level. And the water level is that second line down. And this is all in the packet in that report that you can see that it's not going to get into our spring. It's most likely going to go into the Blacksmith Ford River. So the potential of any any seepage entering either of these water sources is low. Some of the protection measures that were recommended by Laughlin Water Associates was continuing continually monitoring what's happening in a drinking water source protection area. Include drinking sort drinking water source protection areas in GIS system. Seek notification from neighboring communities for any land use changes. Coordinate with EMS and fire to develop a notification system that gives opportunity to assess and react to potential spill or other impacts. And public education, those business owners, residents and landowners of the possible impact to Nibley City's drinking water. So we do are, we already have the source protection zones designated in GIS and we are receiving notifications from at least the Bay River Health Department. When a new septic system is coming in. We can probably do better with other land use changes from iron in the county. We probably have to do some work to do that. And then public education of businesses, business owners and residents. Part of the drinking sort drinking water source protection plan has mailers that we send, we're supposed to send out to everybody. So it's just to say, be careful when you're using herbicides, chemicals, if you have a home business that works with automobiles, be careful how you dispose of used oils. Just, it's just a helpful handout to remind people that where they live could affect everybody. Any questions so far? Okay.
Comment about that.
Eat bad.
Left, so as required, I think every five years or so on the notification. We set those out and pan. People from iron were upset. Like I had to call into a city council meeting and like explain what I did and basically apologize for meeting state code. Because their council and mayor got so many upset people that Nibley City would dare mail them. It was a little, it was a little shocking.
A great question. It's new.
Probably, yeah, the last time I say. I, I believe in my research, our last, uh, content was twenty twenty one, so it is coming up here. So the recommendation is for city council to consider providing a letter of support, allowing a new septic system with this within the city's drinking waters, source protection zone. And there's a copy of the letter in teams. There's, there's a couple of other files in there. I don't know if you had a chance or if you had any interest in that, but if you have any further questions, I can answer those.
Good, um. Tori, you want to refute anything Tom said or add to anything Tom said, or we'll give you a chance to talk. We might ask you questions as we discuss things as well.
I'll, I'll, before you start, he's been very patient. It, it didn't reach a level higher priority and it got moved from Levi to me and it got lost on the shovel. So shuffle. So I apologize for it to take a while to get here, but you're good. I'm still working with you guys. You're faster than me. But, you know, great, we're great work before, um, so. No problems with the paper together.
Okay.
It's good.
The geology. I mean, a perched aquifer means one that's sitting on top of something that keeps it from going deeper, right? And I won't be a hobby geologist tonight, I promise, but if the if the possible source is up here and the springs are here and the springs are on a perched aquifer, how does the possible source get down to, I, I guess I'm not seeing that in the picture. How does the possible source get down to the river instead of being perched at the spring aquifer?
In the study, it mentions that due to hydrogeology features there that it will start surfacing at the toe of that that knoll or the bluff, whatever you want to call it, and then it'll work its way into the river then. So I'd imagine there are some springs around at that base that the likelihood of it getting to the Yates in pro- due to the proximity of the project, the likelihood of getting into the Yates spring is, oh, is what the report said.
In Mr. Laughlin address, it's, it's not our circus, but address those other springs, those privately owned springs.
He, he was not instructed to do so. Our code is to protect.
Did we hire Mr. Laughlin?
We did. Yes. A great question. We, we did hire Mr. Laughlin. And the cost to perform the study and and submit the report was passed on to Mr. Tori.
Ah, okay, cool. That was that answered my question, right? It seems like we're able to handle it. Since we're talking about budget. All right, I'm, I'll be quiet for a while. Nick.
Is this property unincorporated county that, true?
Uh, it's Iron City.
Yeah.
Was ancient laid, so we can ourselves. I would say. I, I saw it last time.
Yeah, because there's, there's one that I think, I think the whole city, there's two parcels there, same trips.
Right, yeah, hillside is a certain, I think that's county.
I, I wish it just like why I would say resources, but if you don't answer them, it's probably necessarily the subject concerns connecting the higher facility.
So it's a highway separates the parcel from the sewer system. Yeah, so there's several homes down the hill to actually much more water table. That have been built the last three to five years. We're in Iron City, it also far the structure to lay out septic systems. So I can expound on that just their hair. So there, there's provisions in the plumbing code that allows property that's further than three hundred feet away from a staff of sewer line to be considered for a septic tank. Otherwise, they're mandated to soup.
Curious.
Any other thoughts?
If no one says anything, I'll ask if oh wait, if no one says anything. I'll ask if you're ready to vote.
So do we need, we're just voting, it's okay to use word of letters?
Didn't, well, it looks like I'm supposed to sign the letter, but I think a motion from you would be appropriate. Which would essentially instruct me to sign a letter to say that you, uh, support allowing a new septic system as described. I didn't get that most.
No, you're good motions.
So more, there's a motion and a is a second. Second from air. The motion is second is to, uh, sign a letter of support allowing a new septic system. The DWSP, so as described. Discussion? If nobody says anything, so ask. It's not a resolution. It's not an ordinance. No one objects to voting. Those in favor of signing the letter of support, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's three in favor, one opposed. Not sure what to say. Happy doing whatever you do with the septic system. I'm glad you don't have to hold it in you. Thank you. All right, next. Let's move on to this is a rezone, um. From twenty, uh, from commercial to industrial, this is our second reading. Um. Mr. Hammond and Mrs. Hammond are there. I'm not sure. Actually, I don't know that. Tina and Dirk were here talking to us last night. Levi, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no.
From first reading?
Anything to that? Sir, minor, Scott, Plan of Commission's recommendation is denial. The ordinance of the findings that are shown up on on the screen, it's not not compatible with future land use map and uh, not compatible with the surrounding uses. I'm considering the residential uses in the area.
There was an email from from Dirk that I want to just be clear following up. When you outside the email, I didn't respond to it. I'm not. Um, I mean, one of the things I had talked about as an alternative was changing the land use chart to allow a machine shop in the commercial zone. That would be he, he said permitted. What I, what I meant to say, what I thought I said was a conditional permit. Not permitted. Um. And also the conditions would put some severe limitations on the machine shop that could be in that commercial zone. I'm not saying I'm behind now, I'm just saying that's another way to get there, but I I didn't want to endorse a full blown unlimited machine shop in the commercial zone. So I'm just limit that expectation.
Clarify that. That is something we could not hear.
Correct. Since required. Yes, thank you. I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that, but so thanks for the clarification. Tonight, you decide whether you're resoning. And you can reason on it to add if you want.
Just change the map today.
Okay, motion. Motion to deny. A second from Garrett to to deny the ordinance. Twenty five to discussion, please.
Consider some of your ultimate suggestions. They want to take it up.
Yeah.
I get it.
Discussion? If you don't say anything, said that's my then I'm going to call for a vote. Cheryl, will you call the roll please on on this motion to deny?
Once another advanced dial, what is your vote? Dispar by the city.
This is the, yeah, a motion, a vote in favor is to be in favor. So that's four in favor of denial, none opposed to denial. So the reason. Okay, um, then we're gonna talk about mixed use RM modifications, amending the mixed use zone. Right?
Yeah, um, and if if I might, well, it's on the screen right now. A couple of meetings ago, Garrett suggested a chart to kind of break down the the changes. Hopefully, this is kind of what you were looking for. Um. But because it's been a little while, maybe I'll, if if it's okay, I'll spend a little bit of time reminding you of what's what's in front of you. Here is continued in the last meeting, uh, but I'll, I'll start with this, with with this chart, um. Here is continued in the last meeting, uh, but I'll I'll start with this, with with this chart, um. So. The. I'll just run down it here. So the RM zone size, there isn't currently a a size limitation and uh for for an RM zone. But the proposed code would be that it needs to be between ten and forty acres. For the RM zone and. Um, the. For R P U D, it would lower it from a forty acre minimum to a twenty acre minimum. The for the. Location that an RM could could be um approved. Currently, there's an adopted map that just shows two two areas, um, one of them's in Logan City. Probably isn't going. To move uh from in into Nibbly, but and the the other one is Wesley Nelson property, which already has been approved as RM. Uh, but wh- what would change is the areas that are designated as high density or town center within the general plan could be. Zoned as RM. What's something else that's added that's not currently in there is a mixed use requirement for RM. And these are for areas that are either near state highway or an intersection of arterials. There's specific. Measures and I can get into those if you'd like, but just in short. In in those specified areas, they they would require that ten percent of the ground floor area be um. Commercial use. The maximum density, one thing that is is changed is that if you do. Uh, meet that mixed use threshold within any of of an R, any area, not just with, if you're required to. Uh, you could get up to twelve units per net developed per acre instead of ten. Uh, the in the R P U D. Ordinance, there's currently a maximum density of five units per net developed per acre if. If you're not using the T D R bonus um. And that would be a a raise to seven units per net developed acre in this, if this were approved. Uh. There's this provision and both in the RM and in the R P D ordinance. That if you're within three hundred feet of single family residential um. That you need, that the homes need to be also single family within the development unless it's. Unless there's an arterial roadway that buffers you, and this is changed to just to say that the buildings. They can be multifamily of of some sort, but they are limited to two stories and no more than a hundred feet in buil- building lane. Uh. The current ordinance, just in short, it does encourage reloaded garages, but. The the language is strengthened. Uh, that it would actually require reloaded garages for like townhomes and and condos. So of and then. The current ordinance removes the requirement for clubhouse pool and splash pad. Within the open space amenities, both for R P D and RM zone. And then also, there's there's. Specific language which allows for a fee in lieu of open space and amenities uh. In the RM, R P D and open space subdivision. If they're within a half mile of the park. And this is based on for amenities, uh, if if they want a fee in lieu of amenities, it it's just based on the estimated cost of the amenity. For open space, uh, it's not defined currently in the ordinance, it would have to be added if if this if this were adopted. Uh, we would, we would. Um, come back with a. You know, at a at a future date with with a specific um amount, whether it's per acre. We we'd have to do a little more research, come up with an amount on on the fee in lieu for. Open space. But. Uh, there is a provision in there that still requires. At least ten percent, if there's any kind of multifamily component to the project, it still requires ten percent in net developed acreage. At minimum open space, so it doesn't allow for completely removing o- open space, even if you have the fee in lieu, but. But reducing it. And that pretty much summarizes uh everything uh. I I can get into more detail here. If you'd like. But just to get back to. The reason we're doing this, some of some of these changes. Trying to balance a lot of different things, uh, planning commission. Put a lot of. There's a lot of discussion and that that led to these changes, but. They're trying to direct the RM zone appropriately planned areas consistent with the general plan. Um, disperse rather than concentrate higher density residential development, that's that's part of the reason for. Or part part of the reason for the ten to forty acre maximum on the RM zone is it encourages that that dispersment. Uh. Just with with some recent changes to R P U D. Code, there's it, there's been uh. Some more appetite from developers to. Use RM instead of R P U D and it's it's trying to. Some of these changes point more toward. Making R P D more enticing by. Reducing the acreage and incre- increasing the density a little bit. For example, uh. Also requiring some level of commercial mixed use. At least in some of these appropriate areas where it seems like that there should be some viable. Uh. Option for for commercial development. There's some provisions to improve the design of of new housing. And then and then allowing for feed oh. In lieu of open space areas that are already well served by parks and this will allow. Uh, using those funds toward improving those park spaces. Rather than, you know, just adding adding more acreage, we've. It was it was one finding of the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan to be. More selective on the open space that the city takes on and and. To focus more on improving the spaces rather than just getting more acreage, and this would. Get us more in that direction. Yeah.
So this is a list of. Aggregated amendments who that occurred. In the proposed RM and has already occurred in the R P U D.
This is just, this is just the purpose of. All of what's in front of you tonight.
Well, we're not voting.
You are. You are. There there's RM, R P U D, there's even open space subdivision, there's there's a. They they started with RM and then they kind of opened up a bigger can of worms, as as often happens, so. Yeah, that that's alright. So. I already kind of explained all all of these from the chart. So I won't go, I won't rehash these slides, but uh, planning commissions and and staff's recommendation is approval. Of this ordinance with a long name that I came up with.
Now I knew I knew that, but somehow it slipped my mind for a minute.
Sorry, yeah, that's what, that's the way it started and then it evolved into more. Right, I think I still, I think, yeah, I think it's called RM. But it, we just kept adding.
Thank you. Are there questions for Levi?
Some out of these, which one do you think uh will be the most popular?
I think it depends, um, I I I think it will help. So that I I feel like. Kind of an unintended consequence of when we. Adopted the T D R ordinance is we significantly lowered the density for R P U D, and I think because of that, we're. We're hearing developers saying, well, gee, five units doesn't get me anywhere and. T D R is a difficult thing, a bridge to cross, and we just saw with, for example. Nibbly Meadows, they developed about about seven units per net developed acre, so. I think seven is is pretty reasonable. There's still an incentive for something like T D R if someone wants to do something more dense. Fifteen is really. Fifteen units per acre would be something real, a lot more significant. But I I think it depends on on the project. If they have ten acres. Then an R P D is not gonna work and an RM might. Might be better it because. Uh. It uh doesn't necessarily require multiple housing types and. And that might fit within that area, like in the town center area, let's say there's a ten acre piece of property, someone wants to do a. Even in uh, you know, a townhome development, for example, they could, they could fit something there. So, yeah. So it kind of depends, but I think it's just trying to balance and provide some options, but also just not open it up completely. There was some concern on the. Planning Commission of just. Everyone, everyone's going to. Want, you know, an RM or an R P D and this. Aims to to kind of balance that and disperse and but but still provide some more options.
Just make sure there were no changes to the R P D map.
There wasn't. Yeah, they didn't. That you you could do that. Yeah. But they ultimately they. I think they got far enough. They discussed enough of this that they were like. This is good enough, let's let's push it to the city council, but that that was brought up, it just, they didn't come to a conclusion on it.
So I, I appreciate the work. The by commission, you put it honestly, I my, the following comment is not to disregard or disrespect that. At all, I'm gonna ask it anyway. Given where we are. With the general plan update. Is this something to? Eat. Hot but or warm on the on the back burner and wait to see what the general plan turns out to be, or is this? In your opinion. Okay to move forward with it while we're working on the plan.
I think it's okay to move forward with it because I think we've identified deficiencies. That need addressing, I I don't think it's necessarily. It doesn't mean that. It's not gonna change again, and there might be some bigger changes after the general plan, uh, of direction and structure of our ordinances and. It might lead to something else, but I think, I think just. Over the. You know, four or five years working with these. With these codes and seeing what has come through. This is more a reflection of and 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 market conditions and everything, this is more a reflection of trying to address those deficiencies and and. And trying to acknowledge that there's options. When a developer comes in. So I I. I think it, we might be doing this again another year, but. I think this is a positive.
Okay.
Uh. Uh, positive direction.
And and I point out that. This doesn't. Rezone anything, it doesn't change any. R P D maps. At least not yet. And uh, it doesn't create RM zones. It just says if the council. Negotiates an R P U D. Where the R P U D map says it is, or the council changes with planning commission's advice, the R P U D map. Or the RM map. Then these would be the rules. So it doesn't change where this can be implemented, it changes what would be implemented if there was that additional change. And here's my question. Does having the. The change. Build an expectation in a developer's mind. Say, gee, I'd really like to do that. And they have a code for it. But they kind of forget that. It's not even allowed anymore at the moment. RM, for example.
Well, it's.
I mean, if it would, it requires a result.
It requires a rezone, yeah.
Build the expectation that we would rezone something to that. Without having gone through the plan. The general plan.
It could, it could build that expectation. That we, but. Yeah, I mean, there's there's that, there's that discretion, but it could, a developer could go, oh. The city is supportive of anywhere it says high density and anywhere it says town center.
Yep.
It doesn't change, it doesn't, it doesn't change it for the R P U D because the map's still the same. But they could. Yeah, it could build that expectation. That there was, there was serious discussion of just. Re- just getting rid of the map altogether and just leaving it completely open.
For RP.
For RM, uh, R P U D, the map wasn't really discussed, to be honest, at at the planning commission at at length at least.
My motion is to continue. So a second, you want me to repeat it? It's most to continue, so a second for that.
Yeah, okay. So the motion. By Nathan, second by Norman, is to continue till our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll give you some reasons why, I guess, that's not required. I think I'm going down a similar path as what Mayor was, as I looked at it. Um, our future land use map, which I think. Will be. Very much revised. In the general plan date. I compared. Where high density. There's no just high density zones in our future, they're all either high density, medium or commercial. We have a little color. The designation that leaves nowhere on the map. Right, so basically we're talking about anywhere we've designed. High, commercial. Some media. Um. And then when I compare that to the R P U D. There's some weird things going, I I feel there. And I I. I actually wouldn't say that it. Makes me want to do RM more. Because there's more space. Whatever land I own, I have more probability because I. Don't own just the one on the R P U D map, so I think that's one thing that I just need to. More time to figure out, maybe come back with proposal of. Getting rid of R P U D or changing some things. I think in the end, my concern is with our future use map. But by passing this. There is the clarification of, well, it doesn't guarantee that everything is automatically RM, so. That's just one thing and um. The setbacks are. Something else I'd like some more time with, I think they're still too big. For an RM zone.
Is anybody waiting for us to pass it to develop a night a couple days looking at?
Not really, uh, because so Karchner. They wanted to uh. Well, I I should, I should say that I, there probably are a few, but not necessarily specifically what's on paper here. This wasn't proposed by any developer, this was based on planning commission discussion, what was appropriate, but. Card, what started this whole thing was Karchner did ask for the RM zone. For a portion of that annexation area. Well, then they asked to withdraw their application and then we found, well, Sierra's in talks with them on buying it. Wayne mentioned that in a meeting. And their intention, at least for that property, is. R two A, that they would, that they were okay with R two A, which is what was kind of the motion that was on the the table. Uh, there, there's definitely discussions of other higher density developments in other parts of town. Including, you know, just south of there, po- potential future annexation area. But nothing that's like imminent, I would say, that they're really waiting for this. Yeah.
I'm okay. Alright. Is anyone opposed to voting on the motion? Alright, well, it's in favor of the moves to continue until our next meeting. Please say. Okay, well, I hope you're not mad at us, leave, I, I people's brain points.
But there's no, there's nothing for staff to do though, just to clarify between now and the next meeting. Okay.
Let's uh, back to snow. Snow. There were little patterns. And this ordinance twenty five twenty is with a, a man or a co regarding snow removal. Justin, you've talked about already everything saved. Motion to approve ordinance twenty five twenty. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the change to the ordinance said show. Discussion please. It, it clarifies. That was Eric. Thank you. Sorry, I should, I'm getting lazy, Cheryl. I figured you'll watch it on YouTube. With all the rest of Nibley. Thank you, Nathan. Are we opposed to voting? Saying opposition, Cheryl, will you call the roll, please, on ordinance twenty five twenty? For our favor and opposed, thank you, council. Thanks for your consideration on that. Justin, thanks for your suggestion. Uh, that brings us to the last item in the city council meeting, and that's council and staff reports. Norm, let's start with you tonight.
Thought the nibble days was good. Um, it was fun, uh. I could talk to you to drive a tractor, and pull in your boat, spray with the coloring kids, and it. Those kids are just excited. It's amazing, we're all watered, squirt, we'll do a whole inch, so anyways.
Thanks for your help on.
Uh, same comments, really appreciated, it's on. Started for some weeks for the play. And I appreciate staff including me in some of the conversations just uh. No, I have no questions or takes for that, so thank you.
Okay, Eric, thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, just did um, inherited great. We had some friends visiting from out of town. And after the end of the weekend, they were like, they don't want to try my house here. So they're in the process of buying a house here. The kids were like, here.
Oh, don't let him go to Hyatt.
Where do you get a commission fee then?
A referral.
Thank you. I had a couple people asking me about watering some of the spaces and stuff, cause I'm. Sad. The one that I've asked most of us visited being two fifty west and thirty six fifteen in the corner. One of the things I, uh, could go down and I, I'm wondering maybe do a workshop. On what we might maybe consider doing, some of the underutilized. Pocket parks or, or, you know, open spaces that are used to be clearly unusable. Or it's like anything. It's kind of, you don't, you're just sad and neglected and I know it's hard. I'm talking about how hard it is to get all of those to, with everything. I'd like that workshop on that, see if there's some options. Resell some of those. Yeah, I would like to pose a workshop that could make certain ones.
Will you make a note?
I'm sorry.
Buy it, Mike Lee.
Man, and somebody's also for sale. Yeah.
I had a discussion with the property owner recently that in the background, there, there's something going on. We haven't received an application. But we've had, we have, we have had a few discussions as a property owner.
Yeah, if you can pick a movie in the park.
Oh, it's gonna be, it'll be a conjunction with the other then.
Okay.
And then uh, I didn't make it Saturday to there, as Nathan is curious how the general plan is serving way.
Yeah, but I, I did turn Eric great. Um, I mean, it's why this kind of slow this steady stream of people who come up and. Were interested in, um, I picked up a lot of people putting dots on the four different options, about which growth pattern they most interested in. People who put comments on the map, uh, suggestions, even about things that change or fear or things like that. So it was good, um, probably just worth while.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, we had dots on the map and. In general, kind of the, the key takeaways there, at least from those at, at Heritage Days that attended that. Talked to us and interacted, that they don't want us to just do things the same way we have been doing them. So the most popular was the centered growth. Pattern and the next was connected communities, some more parks and open space. Tho- those are pretty close. And then growth as is and low, low intensity were, were quite a bit lower than those. That's kind of what we heard from people, uh, but a lot of good discussions. I heard a lot of people saying we should do more with. Commercial development in Nibley, pushing, pushing economic development. So, yeah, I've. Yeah. Right. Um. That. Um. Yeah, we, anyway, it was, it was good. It was worthwhile. Good discussions. Yeah, yeah, so, um. Yeah, Tuesday, I would, I would say kind of similar sentiments. So when we had, yeah, we appreciate any, everyone that participated in that one as well. But, but yeah, I, I would say pretty consistent. Uh, there's more depth to it, but, but yeah, pretty consistent with what we heard in the park.
I don't have a chair, but the Barbara, he lives in, in, in. Him and his four year old, two year, the, the claw toward the park, leaving the house and they do all the parks. And it takes about an hour to head, so he was very big for connectivity and use for park, it's a lot. Maybe they're awkward with.
Uh, I'll, I'll be brief. Justin, I, I talked with you about a specific. Piece of open space that I need to get back to you. Yeah, that's not on you, it's on me. Reminder for myself, and then. Heritage Days was great. Yeah, thanks for all the support. Staff did a great job. Uh, I said this last year, I'll say to you in this year, my word. You, or you, or you, or you, or someone used to spell me on driving the tractor. You did, that was too short last. I, I need a, no, I'm not expecting, so I need to figure out how I can beat it around. This is a city poll, right, which is, you know, my sort of favorite thing to do in the whole world. Reminder to myself on two things.
Uh, kind of already mentioned the, appreciate all the help with, with Heritage Days. For the general plan as well, as well as the open house. Thanks for everyone that was participated there, or the, the workshop, that is, that we had on Tuesday. Uh, just wanted to ask, so we have, uh, there's developer that's interested in. Pursuing an annexation and development on the, on the south of Nibley Farms there, south of the. Current uh, annexation that's, that's on, on the table. And we felt like they started getting into detail on some ideas, concept plans, and we, we felt it was. It would be more productive if we had, we've done this before with, with other developments. Kind of convene a development review committee for this. And so just wanted to ask if there's a. It, it'd be good to have two council members, um, get involved in that discussion. We'll probably have a meeting in the next few weeks. With the developer and, and just kind of chart a path forward for them, um. Help, help. Uh, you know, again, any decisions need to be made by the whole planning commission, the whole council, but, but just to. Help give them an idea of, of where to head with this, so. Yeah, volunteers. Garrett, Garrett and Nate were the first to raise their hand. Are we good there? Okay, I'll, I'll send invite to you. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Update on a couple of projects, thirteen hundred west. I expect construction to be done the end of next month. And they, they're out on that, so. It, it is actually going long. There hasn't been anyone working this week, a four, a retaining wall, they're waiting for that here. There's concrete sets. They're ready seventy percent or eighty percent, excuse me, pull back down and, and continue on, but they're expecting to shut up. Four, five weeks. Twelve hundred west, I don't know what happened from the time that state department's bid to, to date. But the original schedule had them starting the first week of June, ending the, the third of August, I believe. Now they're planning to start about the third week of July, and that'll run them into late September. So it's just. I have no control over it. The deadline has, it's October fifteenth. Uh, this week I've, I've been working with Amy and. Our grants reimbursements reporting, there's, there's several that I, that I'm helping manage. And then the rest of the week I was, I was working on a protective easement for. Nibley City Center Park, I almost said the wrong one, but formerly known as Ridge Lane City Park. I have a draft into council member Larson and the mayor. We're running into a really critical deadline if we don't get permitted with the army board. We may not be able to get our permits and construct this year. I hate to put the pressure on you, but if you have any comments on it, included a cost estimate of what. The estimated cost would be to maintain or comply with this conservation easement and the biological assessment that's included. So it is roughly about eighteen thousand dollars over twenty years. There's a lot in the first two years because it has some survey work from Bio West. Populations of surveying and then reporting back to Fish Wildlife Service. After that, it's just like a volunteer, go out and count to see how the habitat is reacting to any changes in, in. Conditions in the environment, so if you wouldn't mind expediting any comment, concerns, complaints you have on that. I'd like to get that to the Fish and Wildlife tomorrow or Monday at least. It's already been clear reviewed by the city attorney. And uh, Cole, no, Coleman Klein. He's, he's the guy that did our presentation on the environment, so we wanted down to five a comment. So other than that.
So you, I thought I, I didn't miss it, but I didn't miss it by that much, so it was like. What? Again? I missed something again?
Yeah, four forty two.
Five hours still.
That's like yesterday.
Seems like. Cheryl. Steve.
Well, thanks for the good discussion earlier, but I'll speak on behalf of Public Works, thanks for that. One thing I, you know, we're talking about money tonight and. Pretty intense, it seems like, of how we want to see our money's being spent. And we had an asset management that we've set aside. What importance about asset management, what that'll do for us is show a real time cost part to a project. Equipment. Supplies to material. Man hours that would give us real time stuff. So with that being said. Other than the costs there, but if I break that into five departments, it's, it's roughly five thousand dollars per part for. Earlier, so we have really achieve to really cut. And see, you know, what, what's being allocated anywhere. Now it's just doing the project, put a two fifty number on it and. So, um. Another thing, our big ten wheel will be showing up on Monday, going solid together, so. Really exciting, this is the one we've been waiting now for two years. It's the Queen Fleet Grant, so we pay for the truck, they reimburse us twenty five percent.
Who gets to drive it, Saltland?
Uh, Jared, Jared Wright's coming down with me, so yeah, he'll, he'll get the luxury of. Running VR stay with plow and sander and so, yeah.
With, is there a nibly sticker on it? Yeah, probably not. You say those idiots in Nibley.
But thank you.
Thank you, Steve, Justin. Nope. Okay. Counsel, we've come to the end of the city council meeting, and so if there's no objection, we will adjourn. But don't go away. No objection, we are adjourned. We have other. I think a lot of people might be coming. Well, that'd be a favor to us, yeah. Any objections if I give you a strike or any objection if you, no problem. I'm the decider. Someone has to. Ready to jump right into the next meeting? Without objection, okay. I call the meeting of the Community Reinvestment Agency to order. First thing for us to consider is approval of the May twenty two, twenty twenty five meeting, and then tonight to Jim. Wasn't that long, but we figured. It wasn't that long, but we figured. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, motion to approve from Garrett, second from. Norm, thank you. All those in favor? Any both? Okay, we have minutes and an agenda. So this is the fiscal year budget. Which I think we saw. Last, let's.
Happy answering the questions, bud.
The motion, we, we, we discussed it.
I motion to approve, uh, resolution CR eight twenty-five.
Oh, that's. No, that's correct, just, I, I'm, I'm enjoying the whole. Okay, I have a motion for. Second, Nathan. Okay, you, I can see it. Discussion on that? Is there an opposition to vote? Saying none doesn't, no, sorry, will you call the roll for us, please? Cheryl, what do we?
Agency number.
In favor.
Agency member.
In favor. I count all agency members in favor therefore of the resolution passes. I think we should say council member to agency one, that's not so much cool. Special agency, about, about free agency. Alright, we've come to the end of the agenda for the CRA, is there opposition to adjourning? Saying none, we are adjourned. Next I call to, you have to, yeah, sorry. I don't know if it's a different recording device or. Okay, uh, next I welcome you to the meeting of the M, the MBA, the Municipal. Building Authority. To call that meeting to order, and I ask you to. Are we approving or ratifying? Ratify. Oh, sorry, it does say ratify, the minutes had approved tonight's agenda. It's a ratification because the minutes have become official without your vote. Motion to. Okay, motion to do those things from Norm and a second from Garrett, those are big motion, please say aye. Opposed, alright. The first item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-five oh-one, this, uh. Sets the offices of the Nibley City Building Authority and adopts the fiscal year next. Officers. Motion to approve, second from Aaron, thank you very much. We've seen it, we've looked at it, talked about it. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed to voting? Seeing opposition? Cheryl, will you call the roll, please? In favor.
Or never, if you, in favor, or.
In favor. I count that as for favoring, so the resolution passes, we've at the end of that agenda, is there any else to adjourning? Saying none, we are adjourned.